Well, we'd like to welcome everyone out to our Highland City Council meeting here on Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. We will begin our meeting with invocation by Councilmember Kim Riddella, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Doug Courtney.
Our dear kind gracious heavenly Father, we're so very grateful to be gathered here today as Highland residents and then those community members who want to learn more and be able to serve our community. We are especially grateful for the area that we live in, for the friends and family and neighbors that we have that surround us. Tonight, we ask you that they guide us in the decisions that we make and that we are able to have the Spirit with us in order to make the decisions best for our residents. And we say these things humbly in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right here at the beginning of our meetings, we have a time set apart to what's called unscheduled public appearances. We'd like to invite anyone that'd like to come up and address any item here on the agenda. We do have one item that will have a public hearing, which you'll be able to get up during that time, which is our item number 4A, which is a text amendment to expiration approvals of applications. So if you're here for any other item other than that, we'd like to invite you to come up, if you'll keep your state your name and keep your comments to three minutes.
There's been a lot of work done on Canal Boulevard, but as I've been going door to door, the people that are along Canal Boulevard and in that area are really not happy, and it's time to act. I know you're going to talk about it again tonight, but it's time to do something, time to really do something. And I just, as I've really looked at it and I've sat there for several hours, I don't have a speed gun, I'd love one, I just would really suggest a consistent speed limit throughout Canal Boulevard. I know I've read what some of the recommendations are. I will also tell you that on 6,000 West and Canal Boulevard, I sat there and watched that intersection for about 20 minutes the other day, and I know there's been several really bad accidents right there, but we really need a four-way stop there. We really do. And we need crosswalks on all four streets. We've got it on one, but we need it on all four streets, please. I know how hard you guys work because, well, going door to door is hard work, and I get to hear a lot, which is fine. As far as the two temporary speed bumps go, if you're not using them or you're not going to put them on Canal Boulevard, whatever you decide, would you please put them on 9,600 North? This time of year, we get speed racers at 2:30 a.m. on Friday and Saturday night, and they are speed racing because I can hear them, speed racing. And whatever you do, I'm going to not try to be rude when I say this, but whatever you do on Canal Boulevard, if you put the speed bumps in, please, please, I beg of you, don't put up a silly survey sign that says, you know, "Go to this website and tell us if you like the speed bumps." Nobody's going to like a speed bump. I don't, but you need them on Canal Boulevard. We need them on 9,600 North. We need those things. As far as a baseball field rental, I know you're going to discuss that. Can I talk about that? That's not a, that's not a, okay. Baseball field rental, I hope that's reasonable. I don't know what you consider reasonable, but to really, my, I have four grandsons that are heavily involved in tryout baseball, and it's big time, big time money, but to host, to host a great baseball tournament, you need four fields. You do, at least four. If you look at Saratoga Springs Patriot Field, they have 10 baseball fields, and they make a lot of money on their tournaments. So you've got one. I don't know how you would host a full tournament there, but that's, thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Barb Lamb. I am a resident of Canal Boulevard. I live on the corner of Canal and 5650. About eight years ago, I started with our, our neighborhood and asking for speed mitigation on Canal Boulevard. And I'm just in here to implore you that I know decisions aren't being completely made tonight, but I am imploring you to get it done and for something to absolutely be put into place for Canal Boulevard. I have had the privilege of seeing my neighbors' trees taken down, fences crashed through, cars turned over, every accident in a yard, every accident. It's not even about speeding anymore. It's about safety. Thank you for putting the speed tables in last fall. It was extremely disappointing that the commitment wasn't kept, that when you take that out, you make sure that something else was in its place. That didn't happen. I wasn't completely surprised, and it was actually pretty pleasing for a little while. After you removed them, the speed was pretty decent. People drove pretty decent, but it ended, and summer has hit. We have our car clubs racing down the streets, and we have a number of other things that have just returned. But I know you're working on it, but it's gone on for too long. And I'm just imploring of you to please, please get this on the agenda for something absolutely to be done. I don't know what the answer is. I realize the speed tables were slower than they needed to be, but either put them back on the road or decide something until you get, until you get your firm answer. And I'm, I'm here on behalf of all of the residents along Canal Boulevard, plus others in the neighborhood who are concerned with what they've seen. And then just a completely different comment I wanted to ask about is I live just a block from the corner of Canal and Alpine Highway, and the park there and all the trees are being allowed to die. I don't understand why that's happening. I've called the city and asked the, the botanist or the department, the lawn care, I've never gotten an answer. I've gotten a bit of an answer that you can't afford it. Is that really true? I don't know, but I don't understand why they're being let die, but yet we replace trees in other spots where they were let to die, and that's my taxpayers. I'd love to see, it's not hard to take care of them, get community volunteers. I don't know, but just a, just a thought and just a question. It's really disappointing to see those mature trees die. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Just to kind of maybe address Barb's situation, on our agenda, we do have down traffic mitigation about speed, and then we also have a discussion item about Canal, and we also have a discussion item about the landscape issues that all of us are recognizing throughout the city. So that is actually on our agenda tonight.
If you'd just add, sorry, if you would just add Larson Park to that, it's completely brown.
We will be having some address.
And that was Liz Rice again.
Hi, I know some of you already. My name's Vanessa Moody. I live at 5747 West Yorkshire Court in, by the park. This is not a park issue this time. We had a really significant incident happen in our neighborhood this weekend. It was very scary. And so I'm coming to plead with you guys to look into the rules and regulations and laws behind these little kids being on motorized bikes, motorized scooters. It really affected our family this week. The officers were incredible. I just want to thank the, the officers and how they handled themselves, and they said that we need to get the word out. Unfortunately, I'm in a position, an impossible position, where I do not want to ruin relationships with neighbors because it really affected our neighborhood. My son was affected. He was doing everything right. He was driving the speed limit, actually under the speed limit, when he was hit by a five-year-old little boy on a motorized scooter. And the boy, it was tragic almost. He got rushed to the ER and banged up pretty good, wasn't wearing a helmet, really worried about him. My son thought he killed him. I mean, you can imagine what that would feel like. So we just got to do something about this. They're all over. I didn't realize when, until the police officer told me that those are illegal, even on the sidewalks. It doesn't matter if you're sitting, it doesn't matter if you're standing on those motorized scooters, they're all illegal. I couldn't believe when I heard that. And we have kids shooting in and out constantly around town with them, and we were just affected, and that's why I'm coming here to, to speak. Thankfully, my son did everything right, and that kid, it was a T-bone situation. Had my son been going faster or even a second later, I mean, it, this changed his life. It changed his life, and I just ask you guys to look in that, into that for whatever we can do. I don't know what we can do. I'd love to talk to you guys after. There was even a clip from an ER doctor online that said, if not every single trauma that is coming in right now to the ER, it's from a motorized bike, from a little, from a kid, motorized bike right now. I mean, it's just, it's scary, and especially with summertime. I don't know if there's something you guys can do about it or working with the police force, getting the word out. I just, I feel like my hands are tied so that I don't ruin relationships with my neighbors. So anyway, thanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry about hear about that.
Excuse me, can you tell me your name one more time?
Vanessa Moody.
Thank you, Vanessa.
So Vanessa, actually, it's interesting, our item number 7B is about electric parks tonight.
Perfect, perfect.
You guys are all hitting all of our topics that we are concerned.
Thank you.
The residents have been coming in. We recognize their concerns, and I, I'm really, I'm sad to hear about that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks so much.
For those who don't know me, I'm Gavin Moody. I'm actually her son. Yeah, like, I'm just like a normal teenage boy. I'm just like kind of driving past, like just going to work. I work just like over in J-Dogs, over by Lehigh, if you guys go there. Yeah, so this kid like comes out jutting out of a cul-de-sac with his green, like, bike, and it wasn't like, just like a regular bike. It was motorized, like, as she told you. It was honestly just like the most terrifying thing in my life. Like, I, I thought I did hit him, but no, it was the other way around. He actually hit me. It was like so scary. I thought he was dead. I thought he was on the ground, but we took him over to his mom's house, and we got him. She took him to the ER, and it was a whole ordeal, and we called the cops, of course. And again, the cops were great. Like, we were super happy that he was there, and it was just the scariest thing in my life, like. But after that, like, a couple days later, after the incident, he was okay, but still, I was like, I just don't want this. It was really scary, like, even for just me, like, I don't really get that spooked that easily. I, I was really scared. Yeah, but I did everything that I could, and that's what was important. Yeah, but thank you for your time. That's all I needed to say.
Thank you, Gavin. Can you just, so we kind of understand, were you walking, driving?
I was driving.
So you're in a car?
Yeah.
And this bike came and hit, it sounded like your car?
Yeah, he hit my car, like, a pretty decent speed. I, I was driving the speed limit, of course. I was just driving normal and stuff, so.
It sounds like it was quite a traumatic situation.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not usually someone who brings up like too many issues, but yeah, this, this was a big issue, like.
Thank you for that. Just be aware of it.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I ask a question? So I'm really sorry for your, what happened to you. You know, as people bring problems to the council, and we've been struggling with this, do you have any solutions? If you were the mayor of Highland or the, you know, and you could say, hey, this is the solution, do you have any ideas?
I feel like the best solution would just to bring up awareness of the law, like, of what it was, I guess. And if the law was, like, okay, yeah, sorry. If the law was bringing up to, like, everyone, just like in the city, I feel like that would be really good to, like, I don't know, put something into their heads to believe, like, oh yeah, this is actually a law. We should not be having these things out on the roads with, like, kids with no helmets either. Like, it was really scary. Yeah. And maybe also, like, citations, I guess, but for, like, adults, because these kids, they, they don't know about the rules, like, the laws fully, and the adults are just, like, kind of letting them go. So I feel like citations for the adults would be the best.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Anyone else like to come up and address the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing. The time for the public comments. We'll now go on to our, we do have a presentation tonight. We have a presentation, it's a community development block grant. We do have some associates here from Mountain Land Association of the Government, so we'd like to invite Claudia up and Jessica to come up and share a little bit of information with the council. Welcome, by the way. Good seeing you, Jessica.
Okay, so I'll do the presentation, and it's just regarding the Utah County Urban Renewal Program.
If you can just make sure your talk this week, we got recording when people are online, so.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is just about the joining of the Utah County Community Development Block Grant participation through Utah County and whether or not you guys would be interested in participating.
Can we get your names?
Oh, and my name's Claudia Saldana.
I'm Jessica Delora with MAG.
Is it the side button or the center button? Oh, I see, okay. Okay, so just a little background about CDBG, or the Community Development Block Grant Program. It's a federal program, and we get the money from HUD, and it's used to just improve communities, and it's mostly used for, to help just improve the lower, the quality of life for lower-income residents. And then who gets the funding? Entitlement cities can get funding if they have a population over 50,000, and urban counties can get funding if they have populations over 200,000. Smaller cities that don't hit that population threshold can opt in to join in, to get CDBG funds through the county's program. And by opting in, you're just eligible now to apply for CDBG funds for local projects. The majority of the CDBG funds is used for low and moderate income benefit, and then these smaller pots can be used for, to eliminate slum and blight or urgent need. And then I know that Highland doesn't really have a lot of census tracts where you have a high density of lower-income residents. So these are some presumed categories. That means that we wouldn't have to do income surveys or verify income for anybody. These are just populations that HUD already presumed that at least 51% of them are LMI. And then some project ideas for Highland would include adding accessibility to public facilities or ADA ramps on sidewalks throughout your city, just things of that nature that would fit. And then how to participate. So every three years, we go through this process. Cities can opt in and partner with, with the county. Eligible projects are some of the things that I mentioned, including waterline and carbon gutter improvement, senior centers, which I know Highland doesn't have right now, clearance and demolition. And then participation just makes you eligible to apply for funds. It does not require you to, to apply.
On the ADA ramps, is it limited to ramps, or could it be other ADA measures that need to be taken?
Uh huh, yep, any ADA measures that need to be taken.
And it's, and it's not, it's not income verification if it's ADA, correct?
Uh huh, yep, just because disabled adults or disabled people are presumed LMI already by HUD, so we don't have to do any of that verification. Oh, okay. And then these are just some of the current participants that you'll see. So you'll see some of the neighboring cities already opt into the program. And so steps to participate, if you're interested, we would ask for a resolution from the council and then sign into an agreement with the county by July 15th, and then your participation and being able to apply would begin next July.
We were on the list of participating cities. Is that correct?
No.
I didn't think so.
Well, our name is there.
Hi. Sorry, that's a mistake. No, you guys are not participating right now.
But we get the credit as a part.
Okay, any questions that I can answer for you guys?
So anytime there are grants from the government, any level, there's always red tape. So what do these grants, and I imagine it's a specific grant for different things, but what kind of strings are attached?
Yeah, so there, like you said, there's always federal requirements. So just depending on the program, just like thinking of, like, if it was a construction project, for example, and we're thinking of doing ADA ramps, we would do Davis Bacon, so we would have to get payrolls and be able to, to be able to see that people are getting paid the wages that they should be, other federal requirements. So you can think of environmental reviews, which I think are not as labor-intensive on the city. MAG administers the program for Utah County, and we really do it from start to finish. We would definitely ask for help with certain aspects of, just information-wise, but there really isn't much that I would say gets placed on the city.
So MAG's usually been involved heavily with transportation. So do you, you have talked about helping elderly people, ADA ramps would certainly help that. Do you ever fund, like, senior citizen centers or things like that?
Uh huh, yeah.
So that would be a source of funds for?
Yeah, definitely. I, I just looked at it.
Because we have a demand for that in our city.
Oh, yeah. Then, yeah, definitely. Elderly people are in that presumed category list, so yes, projects that benefit that, that group of individuals would be eligible.
When you talk about projects, what do you, what do you, like, what have you seen other cities do? I mean, when you say senior, hey, we want a senior program, you're going to fund it? Yeah, we're all in favor. Is that what it is, or is it, no, we're going to put an ADA ramp up by our senior center? What is the, what is the, some options?
I'll give some examples. I've been working longer than Claudia on the program. So we've funded in senior centers. We did a remodel in one to make their bathrooms ADA compliant, so seniors can use the bathroom. We've also remodeled and improved the facilities. So one senior center, we made a ceramics room, so they had a throwing wheel and cabinetry to go with that, and the washing up, and then a gym in one senior center. We've also retrofitted rooms to be their technology center, so we added some equipment so that seniors could come in and use the computers for whatever their needs are. So we can fund the actual physical property that serves seniors, so building or rehabbing or purchasing senior centers, we could do that. We can also fund services to seniors. So during COVID, for example, CDBG funds help meet some of the extra demand for Meals on Wheels. So services that go to those populations can also be funded. If you're starting up a new senior program, we can help with the costs of that. We can cover staff costs, materials and supplies for that kind of thing. So CDBG can do a pretty big variety of things.
Does it have to be dedicated, like, a senior center? Something we have is a senior center. Could it be at a, a community center? Could it be inside a library? Like, we said, hey, we want to have some computers available for seniors. Is that something even the library could do, or?
Yeah, you can put it in other facilities that have a multipurpose use. There, it becomes a little bit more complicated to demonstrate that you are serving that population, but one thing you can do is create a separate space or a room and say this is for seniors, or you can purchase equipment that is specifically geared towards them, so if there's extra...
A big monitor.
Yeah, if there's extra, yep, accessibility elements to it, then that is certainly geared towards that population. You can do things like that.
Since Davis Bacon kicks in, is this federal money then? Ultimately, it's from the federal government.
Yep, from the housing and, from HUD.
So what are the match requirements, or do they differ depending on the projects?
So typically, I don't think there's a requirement on match. It definitely, so how the committee ranks projects, that does play into it, whether or not there is a match, and the higher the match obviously gives you more points, but there is no requirement that you need to match any funds.
But what they're saying, if you provide funds for the project, you'll rate higher. Have, have most cities have submitted? Have they been able to receive funding, or has it been, hey, we've had 20 get it, you know, submit and only four get it? What's been your experience that way?
On how many, sorry, what was the question? How many cities?
If, if that's just, we had 20 applicants, do all 20 get something, or is it towards, just know the top, like, what have you seen? What's been your experience?
Yeah, I mean, just for example, this past year, every single applicant that applied got funding other than one, and that was just kind of due to their project not being fully ready, fully ready to be funded yet, and I don't think they were coming in with any matching funds as well. But every other project, all the other cities that applied did get funding this year. And for the most part, I think the majority always do. There might be one or two that don't, but.
What's the typical match?
I see that cities usually, at least the ones that I've seen, is like 50% is what I've seen.
Fifty-fifty, okay.
So one more question. Oh, did I interrupt you, Kim?
I was just wondering, so is MAG the one who does the compliance reporting with this, or is that the city that needs to do that? Because it's pretty obvious.
MAG will do that.
So are these funds replenished every year? I mean, how many, how much is out there?
Yeah, so every year, we don't know exactly how much we're going to get. It's always about the same. Right now, Utah County is receiving about 1.4 million.
Per year?
Per year.
Now, of the CDBG funds, some of that also goes, if someone is starting a business and is, has maybe their income base, that they also go to apply for something that way, right? I mean, that's one of the other aspects.
Yeah, right now, there, MAG also has a program that's a revolving loan fund, and so yes, small businesses can apply for that, and that's also being funded through CDBG or some portion of it is.
I'm actually on that, that board as we do the funding, and it's interesting, because we'll look, oh, hey, can we get these type of funds? It's always interesting, you're trying to do the loan with what type of funds you can use, and so. Any other questions? But what you're saying is if we want to opt in, then we need to do by July 15th to begin for the next year?
Yes.
Council, is this something you would have interest in to put on the Jennifer, on the next, our next city council, Jenna?
Funds that we don't have to collect in the, well, directly collect.
Correct.
It's always that debate.
It's always.
We'll, we'll go ahead, and we'll place it on our Jennifer in two weeks. So appreciate your coming and taking the time.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to our item number three. There are two consent items. Consent item number 3A is an action. It has a nice big word. It's, it's about a litigation, the legal services agreement. And then there's one that is an action of Utah County Sheriff's Office evidence memorandum and understanding. Is there any of those items you'd like to pull?
I'd like to pull 3A.
And what's the name of that word?
Polyfluoroalkyl. Is that, is that close?
I just saw a doctor in my buildup.
PFAS.
Okay. Yeah, the PFAS, whatever that, okay. So that, we'd like to pull that, is, what about 3B?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
We need to, you're just, you're just approving number 3B.
Yeah, we amended it to pull 3A off. I, I thought that's what Scott had asked for.
I pulled 3A.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve number 3B and second by Kim. Do we have electronic voting up on that? Seeing that we don't, let's go ahead, and we'll start down here with you, Brittany.
Yes.
Spot.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
And Ron.
Yes.
Okay, 3B passes. Scott, you pulled 3A.
So I'm just going to talk about my qualms about this. You know, it sounds good, I'm sure. There's some things about this that really bother me. I mean, if you look at the agreement, the attorneys that are representing on this class action suit automatically get a third, but then if you look at all the other little things, they really get about probably 50 to 60%. So I've seen a lot of class action suits in medicine, and I've seen a lot of attorneys, and I'm sorry, you know, I'm not saying you're bad because you're an attorney, but I've seen a lot of attorneys make a ton of money, but I, I find that the people that are maybe affected don't very much. And there's no doubt in my mind that they'll find something wrong with our pipes because it's to their benefit. And, and when they have these, quote, experts come in, are they not going to find it? I'd be really surprised, and there's no way to substantiate it. So I'll tell you what's happened in, in medicine class action suits. So there's a big class action suit about the opioid crisis, and some of it's justified, and there have been people, obviously, that have been ill-affected and unfortunate deaths and a lot of different things. But what they did is they came in and sued all the wholesale houses that provide the medications. And so now people that need the medications can't get them. And so now, people that need the medications can't get them because there's constant shortages. So my question is, if we support this, and I'll probably be the only one that votes against it, but if we support this, are we going to have shortages from these companies that make our PVC pipes? Because they're going to pass along the costs of this litigation. And so in the end, we're going to pay for it. Are we going to get more benefit than we're going to pay for in the long term? And so I, I don't have any obligation to make a, a bunch of lawyers that do all these class action suits, a lot of money so they can build a mansion. I mean, with Fen-Phen 25 years ago, most of you don't even remember what that was about. But there was a lawyer up in Alpine that built a $29 million mansion off the Fen-Phen litigation. And there's still questions in my mind whether it was really valid. So I have really a lot of trouble with class action suits because I think there's a lot of ill effects down the pipeline, and the benefits go to the attorneys. So that's my opinion, whether it's agreed on or not, but I don't know.
I actually have some similar concerns about class action lawsuits and our involvement in this one. I, I think I'd come down on the, yes, it makes sense for us to move forward, but I totally get what you're saying, Scott. I agree with basically everything you said.
I, I too understand the concern. Years ago, my mother signed me up for a class action suit in California. It was the Erin Brockovich case. And I received some funds from that. So the attorneys, yes, they made a lot of money, but so did we who were harmed by drinking water that had been contaminated. My concern with this is if this includes the evaluation of our system to see if there's a problem, I think we need to know that. And this will do that. So I have the same concerns, Scott, and Doug, I, I really do. That said, there still is money that flows to deserving parties. Even though the proportion isn't what we would think it should be, it's horrendous what the proportion is. One-third is ridiculous, but that's the system. So we play the game or we don't, and in this case, I'd like to know if our water has a problem, and this will tell us that.
But, but is this an unbiased evaluation? That's my concern. And what if they say it is? We're going to have to pull all of our pipes out?
Says it is, and maybe we go for another opinion.
Yeah, that's my concern, is I don't think it's unbiased.
Do we already have any indication from a testing standpoint on this point?
We have done eight. So as a bit of background, there are kind of pending EPA regulations regarding PFAS particulates in water. They haven't been fully adopted by the EPA, but everyone kind of knows they're coming in. So the state of Utah started telling all public drinking waters to start looking to see if you can meet those standards, or if you have to start doing treatment of your water. We did a test last year sometime, and we were well under the EPA limit for danger. Now, I don't know if that test was done as what these court settlements look for, so. But as far as we know, we don't have any issue with this in our water. And so the hope is, these attorneys will come out and they'll have their experts test, and they'll say, your water is great. We're not going to get any money on this, and we just lost however many, you know, dollars on doing testing for you for free. And I'll say, great, that's what we wanted.
Take a bet on that?
The ideal is that they test for us for free, and we don't have anything that we need to do. If there is contamination, then there's, there's sliding scales of how much you get out of this compensation fund that's already been established by the courts from these companies. And based on contamination and size, you get certain amounts from it, and then it gets divvied out. As you pointed out, Councilmember Smith, a lot goes to the attorneys. So the hope is, we'll get free testing out of this, and everything will be fine. And we will confirm that Highland just drinking water is still fantastic, as we've always, as we believe it is currently, with all the tests that we do, and we regularly test for a lot of things in our water.
Is this something that they're asking, you know, they've submitted to all cities? Or are they looking at certain cities that had certain type of products?
No, you can go on the court website, and you'll find they have this huge settlement agreement with, you know, DuPont and these other manufacturers. And there's dozens and dozens of pages of appendices that are, here's all of the potential affected drinking water systems. And it's literally every single city and town in the United States, and every, you know, drinking water supplier. And then they broke them out in phases based on who they thought was more affected versus less affected. We're in the phase two, meaning they assumed we were less affected based on, you know, different factors. So we're in the phase two, but it's a, it's not because they think Highland City has a problem. It's, here's a list of literally every city in Utah, and we just stuck them all on this phase two list.
Do you know, Rob, and apologies, I should have gone and done some research on this point ahead of time, but it didn't occur to me until just now. Do you know if it is something that, like with asbestos, that as long as the pipes are there intact, there's really not a big problem, but as they degrade over time, it becomes a bigger issue?
That's beyond, I don't know that, I'm sorry.
No, I, and again, I should have, I just didn't think about it until now.
From my limited understanding, it's less about the pipes and more about other substances that were used that could infiltrate into the groundwater system. One of the major things they focused on was firefighting foam, which we have used in Highland. It's, we, you know, foam days and things like that, that contained a lot of these chemicals, and was washed into our storm drains and goes down, and us as well as every other city, again, in the United States. So there's a reason this is a class action. Say, because it is a class action, we have the choice of participating in it or not participating in it. But if we don't participate in it, we will settle our claims regardless. We're part of the class. So question is whether do we want to participate in this? I fully share a lot of the concerns about how good tort law is at resolving these types of policy issues. It's, I don't think it's a, it's a very blunt instrument for something that requires more fine tuning, but sometimes it's the only one that we have.
At this time, there is no assumption that Highland has any contamination in our pipes.
No.
However, as Councilmember Campbell mentioned, this would then go about and do a study to find out. Now, if we find out about it, then we would have to then enact, and that might be part of that settlement. I don't know.
We would get some funds from it, and then we would most likely use that to start looking at, do we need to start doing treatment of our water? Now, if we're all under the EPA limit of, you know, we, we would consider ourselves, okay, we're fine. And that, again, is the hope, and it's what we have so far from our testing results is what we've learned.
So let me ask a question. So if it tests positive, can we get a second opinion? And really make sure, because I just think this is biased.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we're hiring a lawyer to represent us in a lawsuit, so.
Where they can make a lot of money.
They are, they are interested in finding claims that are meritorious, to vigorously represent our interests, is how they would put it. We would, we could obviously do more testing on our own. So yes, we can always get a second opinion. And in fact, if it does come to that, I'm sure we would work with Public Works, and we would do that because we would want to say, okay, maybe we do have an issue, we need to look at that. So far, we don't have any inclination. That's the actual case in Highland, and I would always want to double check whatever we get.
And that, that you're stating is the single reason that I do lean on the side of supporting this. That's the single reason, is that let's, it's free. Let's get it tested, then we'll decide where we're at. Do we need to do more testing if it comes back positive? And hopefully, we can counter that if, because we don't want it to come back positive just to get money at all. But does it need to be tested? I think so.
Is there a motion one way or another?
Mr. Mayor, I have a concern, and there's a sheet that I dropped off in front of everybody about this. I'm concerned that the resolution that is proposed sounds as if we have contamination in our drinking water. And so I, I would like to propose adding a second recital. The text of being, whereas the city is not aware of any contamination of its drinking water, but is committed to regular and responsible testing and system maintenance of its drinking water system and sources to ensure that its drinking water system remains safe and clean for its consumers, and. And thank you to Rob for drafting this. And so, Mr. Mayor, I, I move that the Highland City Council approve the resolution as amended, authorizing the city administrator to execute and carry out the legal services agreement.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Doug, second by Kim. Any further discussion before we go to vote? Okay, do we, looks like we don't have one there at the computer. We just need to do a voice. Okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and we'll start here with you, Scott.
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And Brittany?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four to one. We'll now move on to our item, our first action item, which is a public hearing. It would be a public hearing on a text amendment expiration of approvals, not applications, and that will be, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a relatively minor, but I think administratively important text amendment. This relates just pending land use applications. We've had a few over the last, you know, few months where they've kind of lingered for longer than they probably should have. We didn't have clear deadlines set out in our code, so I decided it might be worth looking at that and establishing some clear deadlines so we can get applications moving, or have them close out so that if they want to move forward, they have to start again. So for example, the, the PO zone text amendment we had that started in 2023 but didn't get resolved until earlier this year. We have a site plan for the property across from City Hall over here, just to the east, that kind of is just hanging out in limbo. I'd like to just have a deadline, so we can say, what are you doing with this application? Let's get it either moving, or, you know, we're going to end it here. So state law just gives us a reasonable kind of timeframe, doesn't give hard deadlines, but that means we can set our own. So our current code, so building permits already have inherent deadlines based on building code, which is basically six months. You have six months to keep doing applications and to keep doing work, otherwise they'll expire. Our subdivisions have timelines to get, go from preliminary plat to final plat, to final plat to recording and to do improvements. And we do have a one-year limit on conditional use permits for them to start doing work after they get a conditional use permit. We don't have anything kind of beyond that for any of our other applications, you know, site plans, or rezones, or text amendments. There's no hard deadlines in our code. So what I've proposed in this text amendment is for incomplete applications. This is one where they've essentially started the process, but either they didn't pay their fees, or they haven't submitted some document that's required for the application. Basically, I let them know, hey, you need to do X, Y, and Z. If they don't do that within 14 days, I'll just clear out the application. They don't lose anything. They didn't have any rights that vested in the application because they hadn't actually finished it yet. I have a few fence permits that just kind of sat for like two months before, and no one paid on it, and I tried to follow up, and like, well, I just close it out. Complete applications, this is those that are in process. We have a, you know, several site plans and subdivisions that are currently under review. If for some reason we send back comments to them and say, all right, fix these things and resubmit to us, and it just dies, you know, they don't respond to us for six months, half a year, we'd like to say, okay, you're not moving forward with this application. I would have to give them a notice for at least two weeks to say, I'm going to close this out unless you comment either resubmit or ask for an extension, and we'll work with them on that. It's more just a way of triggering them to actually move forward. And then finally, for things that actually got approval, so an approved site plan. They have one year after approval to begin construction, and then like with building permits, they have to keep working on it. So if it, they abandon a project for a year, we would lapse or call their application expired, and they'd have to start again. Just in terms of building permits, so you kind of understand how that works out. Off on, I think it's Alpine Highway? Maybe it's North County. There was a lot on a corner that had a foundation. You probably have all driven past it, and it just was two foundations dug into the ground that just sat there for years. They're now building on it, if you've driven past it and seen it. But they tried, we had several people who came in trying to buy it, and they wanted to operate under the original building permit, but that expired several years ago. And we said, our codes have changed since then because we don't allow breezeways to connect structures. And the original plan was to have an ADU by a breezeway, so everyone would have to redo their foundations, and it was a lot more work. But the purpose of that is to not allow someone that started a project just to have an entitlement to something that doesn't, they can't do now forever while they just start. So they had to start again. Also, my proposed amendments would allow for extensions, as long as they're attempting to move forward. The application still complies with city codes. We haven't amended our code to prohibit it in the meantime. There's no changes to the application. We don't discover any sensitive lands, so steep slopes or waterways that we didn't properly mitigate before. This is something that we didn't talk about at the planning commission, but as staff looked at it again, we said we shall not extend if any of these conditions are met. We would like to change it a little more discretionary, that we may not extend, because there might be times where someone technically shouldn't, you know, met one of those things, but there's no real reason to not extend their application. So we'd like to give a little more flexibility there. The person who approves the extension is the same person who approves the actual application. So for a site plan, the council would have to approve the extension. I couldn't do it as staff, but for a fence permit, I could. And then I'm the one who says, yep, your timelines are reached, so I'll send out the notices. And just so, for anything that's currently outstanding, essentially everything except for fence permits, because we have no real way of tracking those, I'll send out notices to everyone saying, we've adopted new guidelines. We're going to start your timeframe from tonight, assuming you pass this code, and give them plenty of time to start working with me to get those things moving forward.
Did the planning commission review this and make an approval?
Planning commission reviewed this last week, and they made a unanimous approval. So in the motion, this is a little bit different. I added that little tweak to change it from a shall not extend if certain condition, but to a may not, so we have a little more flexibility in handling extensions. Happy to answer any questions on this.
Can you go back, let's go back to our timings, just so we can kind of walk through maybe two scenarios here. So let's walk through. Okay, the, the one where they put the application right here. So you're wanting a fence, they come in, they spend the application. It's an incomplete application, and the incomplete could be they didn't pay a fee, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's incomplete. After 14 days, they haven't really moved forward, so it's done, there's been. But, but then if they pay a fee, they have 180 days to complete their application. So if it's a fence, they've come, they've paid their fee, what do they need to do to complete?
Say, they had a complete application, but on their site plan, they showed a fence that didn't meet a setback requirement, or it was the wrong material. And I said, your application's fine, but I need you to change this on your site plan, and then I can approve it. But they don't respond for several, several, you know, 180 days. That's when they had a complete application, but I can't go to approval because I need them to change something in order for me to issue the approval. So that's when we have a complete application, but then they just stopped responding after getting that application to me.
Okay, so you give them 180 days. If there's something wrong with their, I'm just talking about fence.
Yes.
They've now got their fence permit. They have one year to construct that fence, correct?
Correct.
If, if we approve this?
If, if you approve this.
Okay, now let's take it to a sub, I guess, what would be a house or subdivision, would be better to walk through, you think?
So.
I'm sorry, just to clarify on that last point, they don't necessarily have a year to complete it. They, they can't go for a year without making substantial progress toward completing it.
Yeah, theoretically, they could start and build a panel of fence, and as long as they kept doing that every six months or so, they'd be fine.
Or if they start putting, like, they're, they're doing a foundation or something?
Yeah, yeah, start building foundations within a year. They don't have to finish it.
Okay. Now we're to go, so now we have a house application.
Okay.
They come in, they say, hey, I have a house plan. Now, they've completed their application, but now it's going through a review process. I've seen if it meets code, it's going through all of our building department. When does the 180 days start? Is it once it's completed through all reviews or upon the application being submitted?
So for a building permit, they have much more regulated timeframe. So from submission to completion of the application, they have 14 days plus three to review it. So all, our building department has to review a home plan. They have three days to take in the application, say whether it's complete or not, and then they have 14 days to issue the permit at the.
What you're saying is the city has 14 days to review it, and we have to give.
By state law, we have to give, mostly, it's, it's kind of a have to issue an approval within 14 days. After that, and we've had this, we have some building permits, it's kind of a, you have to start building, and you have to keep getting inspections, but we've had some buildings that are owner builds, and they just kind of go out and they work on it a little bit, and then they say, all right, come inspect this part of the foundation, and we do. And then four months later, they say, okay, now come inspect this part. We say, okay. But they're still moving forward, so their permit stays active. We've had a few where they just dropped the project for a year, and that's when we would lapse their application.
But let's assume they're in the process of building, and now it becomes October, and they're saying, hey, my cost for my builder is the winterize to do this. and they're saying, hey, my cost for my builder is the winterize to do this. I'm now, I've got the foundation. I would prefer now not to build during the winter, and now we've kicked that 180 days, and that takes them almost March or April when the building would start back. I'm just, I, there's several, you know, I've seen sometimes, I go, you know what, you're better just get your foundation in and just be done, and then come back, because the cost you're going to pay for utilization might be saving you money.
Right.
But just, I'm just, but they would be underneath that criteria if they stopped in October to be done, at least starting back up within 180 days.
They'd have to start back up, and we have that happen all the time. People will suspend construction, and then they'll reach out to the building department and say, I'm building again. I need to start working on getting my plumbing. We'll say, okay, we know that permit's still active. These aren't meant to be, you know, you hit day 180, and we're going to immediately kill your permit. It's more of, oh, that thing's been sitting there for a while. We should probably clear out our, you know, application queues.
So, let's talk about the cost. So, let's assume they do lapse the 180 days. What's the cost to residents that come and put all this back and get it going again?
So, it depends on the application. When the application lapses, they'll have to pay all fees again and start over, with the exception, so for buildings, so I'll take that home down there that we had that was a foundation for a long time. Their permit lapsed, but they had paid their impact fees at the time, and they didn't ask for those impact fees to be refunded, so we kept them. So, when the new building permit came in, we said, okay, we'll charge you a permit fee based on the valuation of your home, which is how we calculate permit fees. So, that was, they had to pay that again. We didn't discount that based on what was paid previously, but we didn't make them repay their impact fees. They'd already paid to connect water and sewer and all of that. Now, if it's a site plan, there's a $4.75 fee, something like that, for like a site plan application, and $2,000 of engineering fees. If they started, you know, we have a MoBETAs application that's kind of in our queue. If that died for a year, and I closed it out, and they wanted to start again, we'd say, okay, you have to pay that application fee again, which is, we've used that to try to encourage them, say, you don't want to pay, you know, another $3,000 for this. We don't want to start again. We're already mostly through this application. Let's just move it along. So, the, we're hoping that the loss of, loss of those fees encourages them to finish out their projects.
But for clarity, it's just the, the application fee, and it's not the impact fees.
No, as soon as an impact fee is paid, it's considered paid.
But what if, I mean, we don't play the what-if game forever, but what if they stop the project and it's before the 180 days, and, but you know it's going to be 180 days, and they want their impact fees back? Would they be able to get those back if they're going to stop the project?
If they're going to abandon the project, potentially they could. State law says that we have to refund impact fees if no development activity has occurred. So, we could refund it. It just, I would have a conversation with them and say, just so you're aware, if we refund this, that's fine. We will do that, but if someone else builds, they're going to pay whatever the impact fee is on the date of the application, which will always be higher than what you just paid, especially with Tempanogus Special Service District.
If there's no other questions, we do have a public hearing on this.
Yes.
Before we go, we'd like to now, at this time, we'll open up the discussion item on the tax amendment expiration of approval of the, of application. We'd like to, at this time, we'll open for public hearing. If anyone would like to come up and address the council on this item.
Ms. Rice. So, on the amendment, that you have approval permits, one year to begin construction, but will lapse if there is one year of inactivity. And I just feel, believe that you need to be a little more specific of, I mean, if they go and shift around some dirt, that's their activity. So, maybe set a standard of what the activity or inactivity should be. Thanks.
Good input. Anyone else? Mr. Warren.
Ron made me want to play the, the what-if game a little bit, so I thought I'd come up. Wes Warren, something I'd thought about after planning commission meeting was if there was a permit that was approved, and, you know, a year has gone by, and they want to either get going on the project or file for an extension, and code somehow has changed to complicate moving forward. How does the city tackle that? Do they have to go through substantial, you know, changes in their plan in order to accommodate current code?
So, if the application remains active, they, they vest their rights to develop under the code that existed when they filed their application. That's why we care so much the date of a complete application, because that says, there's your standards. And we've had this with a couple subdivisions where we, they've been sitting out there for a while, and our standards have changed in the meantime, and we said, okay, you still get the old ones. But we, that, this is, that's the primary reason why we want these deadlines, is so when our code does change, so recently, like last year, remember the big subdivision code update? We updated all of our public work standards as well. We want all of our subdivisions to follow that. So, we'd rather cut off any old subdivision and say, you got to upsize your lines to meet our current requirements and all those new standards we have, and use the right materials that we like to use now. But if they had been working this whole time, we'd say, well, lucky you. You'd get to be under our old code.
So, with that said, I, I, I know that there's the, you know, if this gets approved, you know, they, they get, what was it, 180 days? Every, every current application kind of starts over. Is that kind of a courtesy that the city is, is doing? That's not like necessary?
It's a courtesy.
Yeah, because I know that you'd mentioned during planning commission, that it's not a, this isn't a punitive action, right? It's just to grease the wheels a little bit. And so, I think things like, because I remember, and Liz was spot on, you know, we, we'd considered some specific language to stipulate what action looks like on, on a, you know, is it swinging a hammer a couple times, and it's like, there you go, I'm good for a year, or not. But I guess since it's not like a punitive thing, it's, it's, it's just to keep things top of mind for both the applicants and the city, I guess. I was appeased, Robert.
Is there any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to come up and address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing and bring it back to council for either a motion or further discussion.
Rob, with regard to Wes's question about changed, the proposed 207.54B1 allows us to deny an extension if the underlying code has changed since it was granted. It, did, am I reading that correctly?
You are.
Okay.
And I think with this little bit of flexibility that we've proposed, we might say, we won't grant this extension since our code has changed unless you want to change your plans to meet our new standard. Like, say it's all, all that would change is, you know, you have to change this from a certain size to, you know, an inch bigger. That's an easy change to make in a plan set. So, it might be something we could condition an extension on meeting our current standard, but if it's a big change, we'd say, sorry, you should, you should have been more proactive in building when you had your entitlement, and now we have a new code.
And, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ron.
I'll move that the city council adopt the ordinance amending the development code to establish general land use application and approval expiration procedures, changing section 4B from shall not to may not.
I'll second.
Motion by Ron, second by Kim.
Can I have one additional question before we vote? Rob, again, based on some of the resident feedback that we received, specifically Liz's comment in this case, and I think Wes touched on it, but in 27051, where we list the expirations, would it make sense, for example, in 1C, to say, instead of or otherwise fails to implement the approval or otherwise fails to substantially implement, or is there someplace we could drop in a...
About reasonably.
Yeah.
That's an attorney.
Yeah.
But can you ever determine is reasonably able to be argued?
I, I don't want to get into the business of sitting down and defining in our code exactly how much somebody has to do in order to, but i- i- if we could insert just a little bit of wording there to make it clear that having somebody bring a shovel and move a pile of dirt from one place to another isn't anything that's really considered implementing it.
We're looking at 1, 1C at the very end where it says otherwise fails to implement the approval within one year of approval, and there's recommending, Rob is an attorney, what would you recommend being added?
And 1D would be another place where we'd want something like that?
I would be comfortable sticking in a reasonably in both reasonably, so it's not a, so it would eliminate the argument that I moved a shovel of dirt, and so technically I've started my approval, you know, carrying out my construction, but I could say, but have you really? So, I'd be fine saying otherwise fails to reasonably implement, implement the approval within, and do that in both C and D.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, that, you're proposing amendment, correct? Are you agreeable as a friendly amendment? So, that would be Ron and Kim. Are you both agreeable to that friendly amendment? Okay, that friendly amendment has now been brought in. Is there any further discussion before we go to vote? Okay, do we have electronic vote?
Can I ask just a question of protocol here? Don't we have to vote on the amendment separately and then go to the thing?
Technically, there is no such thing as a friendly amendment, and that, yes, you have to, however, the, the way that I have, we have done this the last couple of meetings, and the way that I wrap my head around being okay with doing that is, we have a small group, and we seek unanimous consent for doing it. And under parliamentary procedure, if you have unanimous consent, you can do basically anything you want. That doesn't violate the bylaws or the...
So, we basically had unanimous consent.
So, I, instead of asking the maker of the motion and the second personally, I would have just asked if there was any objection.
Okay. Rob, any concern about doing it that way? Okay, we'll go ahead, go forth and vote.
I'm voting yes, because I can't get this system to work.
Go ahead, Miguel. We have everyone in, Jay. That is five to zero. We'll now move on to number 4B, which is an action item, which is an open space maintenance agreement. That will be Jay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. These will be become a regular part of your meetings, at least once a month, and you will grow to love and enjoy these. But anyway, we have four applications before you this evening. One is for the Carters. This is on the, Stephanie has requested, it's, the information where this is located, the address is in your packet, but in order to maintain a certain amount of privacy for the applicants, I'm not going to put them up here. And if you'd like, I can bring up a map to show you, but we're trying, we had to redact everything in the packet application, so that's, that's why I don't have more information than just an aerial shot of this.
The address is in the packet?
Yes.
So, what is it public? So, why is it, my question is, why can we not go there?
It's a Stephanie question.
How could you presume privacy for making an exception for a resident?
We just don't want to say their address right in this moment, but we're happy to navigate on a map for you, if you would like.
Okay.
So, now let me ask you, Rob, why are we doing that? What's the reasoning behind why we're not showing the address? I mean, we have it in our packet. It's in a public packet. What's...
You absolutely can. They've made an application, have requested action from the city council on this. It's just more of, as, as a, I guess, matter of a policy, do you, do you need to do that? Up to the council.
I'll say that personally, I, I like not announcing people's address here. I, the planning commission requests your name and address before you speak to them, and that has always bothered me, that if there is a, a need for us to discuss somebody's address during our meeting in order to make a decision, then I think, yes, we need to do that. It is not, at this point, as Rob pointed out, something that we're precluded from disclosing. I would just prefer to disclose as infrequently as we can.
I'm just thinking of the public interest of what we're doing, and we're making an exception, and does the public have a right to know where that exception is located?
And why?
And why? And, I mean, to me, it's hard to understand what privacy would be expected if you're asking for an exception to the code that we're granting, and why, why would there be a presumed privacy expectation?
Okay, let's just, like, your very first one that's coming in is, there's a uniqueness that would be helpful probably to see the mapping, to understand why this would be something why we'd be saying, hey, why would we do a maintenance agreement, and understand how the trial would work within this, because right now, we're only working, looking at one parcel. Does that make sense?
Staff isn't trying to argue with you on this. We're happy to share it. I think we're just all a little self-conscious, because as you, if you remember, the states come down really heavily on privacy recently, and, and so staff is trying to be a bit more self-conscious about that. But I understand what you're saying. We're not trying to fight you on this. So, why don't we go ahead and discuss where this one's at?
Some of it's just, if you, you might need to see the area to understand...
Absolutely. That makes sense.
What, what we're doing.
Well, they're going to show us the area, and this isn't a privacy thing. If somebody wants the address, they just go look in the pa, the, the packet on it. But, I mean, right now, they're going and showing us the area, and we have all the maps in which we're, we're going to do it. But, I mean, I, I do understand where we don't want to be flashing addresses in front just as, as a privacy thing, that the address is there if somebody wants to go look at it. Just not putting it in your face.
Anyway, let's go through with this application. What's the request?
Okay. Here's a map to show you. It's, is off of Canterbury Drive, so you get a, an idea of where, where this is located. The nature of the encroachment is sod, trees, a total of seven trees, and a small amount of curbing and landscaping bed. This is the narrative. It was in your packet. Hopefully, you read that, but I'm going, I've bold-faced some of the more salient points. They planted seven trees. There are no structures on the city-owned space. There's nothing blocking passage across city-owned space, and all sprinklers are within their, their property lines. So, they are fully abiding by the, the constraints of the maintenance agreement. Here is a, an image looking south from their property. That yellow line delineates the, the border of the city property and the private property. So, the property on the left there with the trees, that's the city property. Here's one that I took last week of, you know, looking north, and those are the trees off to the, to the right there. Once again, with the, the property line marked in yellow.
Now, the city, the city has sprinklers here or does not have sprinklers?
Does not.
Because it looks like city property.
Yeah, it looks like city property.
That's how you know it's city property.
I thought it looked like the Alpine Highway.
Look, it's not just us who has dry spots.
So, so staff is recommending approval of this. This is a corridor that is off of a trailway, and though there is not an active trailway through here, it beautifies the area. If the city did need to drive down this corridor to access property back there, it would, it's a lot easier when it looks like this rather than having, you know, three, four-foot-tall weeds. Any questions about this particular application?
So, let me ask you. So, as we go, you know, and we have not determined on meters, but this parcel would only had had so much water dedicated to it to come in. Now, as we have meters, how is that, and that, maybe this will be something that's got to be discussed at a later date, but this is the area being watered that wasn't included with their water shares, but also as we look at maybe starting to do metering, well, that might kick them up also in their meter rates. And like I said, it hasn't been determined, but, but it is something coming down the path. It, it's just something we're going to have to look at, because also you're going, hey, they're adding 2,000 square feet. You know, there, there are other lots, as you can see, it almost looks like it might be adding just a double in the grass in the back. It could be adding some things, but if you have meters, it'll pick up and they'll pay for it. Right now, they don't. Any other questions on this? There is one thing, Rob. I can't remember. Is this could be addressed on the fence issue now, or when's that going to be addressed?
We were going to do that in community development update, have that conversation.
It looks like everybody along that line is maintaining it. It looks like everybody along that line is maintaining it, and yet, we only have the one that's doing it.
We have two, one of them is the house two to the north.
Right, but I, there are others that look like they don't have an agreement, but they're maintaining it. So is that a, my question, I guess, is, is that a code compliance thing that we address? Ask the city to address and say, you need to have an agreement if you're going to continue to do this? And, and that's true, but I don't know if we know if they have an agreement or not.
That, that's a question, so this is why the map kind of matters. You have three homes that would be backing along here. Do we know if there's maintenance agreements in the other two homes?
The one on the far north, we have another request for this evening.
It's just the one?
The middle one, no.
The middle one would be encroaching at this time, so we'd want, it would be an encroachment letter, but they could come in conformance if we approve this tonight.
Yeah, we're, we reached out to them to let them know that they need a maintenance agreement or need to vacate the property. We just haven't heard back from them, whereas we have from these two. And they're, they're still within their timeframe to get back to us, that we're not pushing yet, but, but we will.
Go ahead. No, I was just, this will be at a later date, but I do want you to, later, as part of the discussion, if you look at the landscaping, you can see there are residents struggling here also with the maintenance that they're landscaping, as we kind of come in talking. I'm just saying, we, it's, it's not just the city that struggles here.
Well, three days a week is real.
We'll, we'll come back and discuss, I just, okay, any, Doug?
I just wanted to confirm, Jay, that we don't, I mean, we can't be sure that there won't be problems, but just looking at it, we don't have any particular reason to suspect that there are going to be problems between the trees and the fence. And that even with the trees there, we have enough room to get vehicles through.
Yeah, it's a 20-foot-wide corridor, so even a backdoor truck could make it back there if needed to. The fence is not built into the ground where the, the roots would undermine that, and they look like they're a good distance away from the fence as well, but the fence is only held into the ground by the posts and not, you know, built two or three inches into the ground like some of those larger walls are. Thank you.
I think as we approve these, that we need to consider that if we approve this, which I 100% support it, I, I hope we do approve it tonight, that we're also realizing that down the road, when we do charge for the amount of water that's being used, that this particular property, because we've entered into an agreement, maybe it could have a boost on how much water is allowed based on this additional square footage, and they wouldn't be charged an overage because they're taking care of our property.
But they're also benefiting by having use of our property.
They are benefiting by it, but we're benefiting certainly by not having weeds that we have to go down there and...
Well...
It beautifies the area. So it's, if it's going to require water to keep it beautiful, then it seems to me we wouldn't want to have the resident then have to pay extra for that water to make our city beautiful.
And that might be a decision that would be at the top.
Exactly, but, but it's just something I hope we consider as we go forward with those fees.
I think if that's something that we want to pursue, then we need to update the maintenance agreement. Paragraph three says that resident is responsible for the care, maintenance, upkeep, repairs, and condition of the property.
I think that's separate in terms of how we determine... From this particular agreement, if that makes sense?
Well, this will be something that, like you said, when we look at the metering and how charging would be a discussion...
Right.
There would be an important discussion to have.
A lot of people are asking about what our plans are with the metering. They are. So, I mean, that's something you're going to address when we do that.
Yep. Other further discussions on the Carter application? Okay, do we, are we getting, are we voting on each one of these individually, I think?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to have a motion specifically here on the Carters.
Can, can I ask a quick question? This is just kind of for review's sake, but if the Carters then decide to sell their property, what happens to the maintenance agreement? Does it go with the property, or does the new owner have to come apply for a new one?
They'd have to apply for a new one. It actually terminates on sale, I believe, is the provision we put in the agreement.
Okay, so the...
The buyers...
It runs with land. Paragraph five is the covenant to run with the land.
I thought we put it in the agreement that if they change property, that way the new owner would know that they have a maintenance agreement with the city. That's what lands...
It's got to be disclosed.
Shall inure to and bind the successor owners of residence property?
Brittany, what do you guys remember, and Kim, do you guys remember? I thought we kind of addressed that.
That's what I remember.
What was it? Remember what? What is it you remember? But does that, does that, but does it, does it, a new owner, so let's assume they have this maintenance agreement...
But does it stay in effect?
Does a new owner have to kind of apply for new maintenance agreement, or do they get the new maintenance agreement? That's, I think, what the question is.
I apologize, Doug is correct. I, I thought we had written it, I thought we had approved it differently, but I think we must have settled on a compromise where it continues for the five-year term.
So it's a five-year term?
But then, after that, it, it automatically expires, and then they have to reapply. So I think that, I remember we had that discussion, and I thought we said terminate, but I think we reached the saying, rather than just cutting off on sale, it was, give them notice of this agreement, and it'll continue, but you still have to reapply after...
Whose responsibility it is to give notice?
The seller, but it'll also be in their title, because we're going to record it against their property, so it'll be in their title report.
Does that answer all the questions there?
That's helpful, I just couldn't remember our final decision on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council approve an open space maintenance agreement with Colleen Carter, subject to the following stipulation: All improvement shall be consistent with the proposed maintenance plan submitted with the application.
I'll second it.
Motion by Doug, Doug, and second by Scott. This is on the Carter application.
And I vote yes.
That passes five to zero. We'll now move on to the next application, which is the...
It says Carter at the top, but it's actually the Amu...
Amu, yeah.
...application. They are just, as Doug said earlier, they're two, two lots north of the, of the Carters, still on that same corridor on Canterbury Drive. They have sod and two trees. Their application justification explains there are no sprinklers, structures, or additional landscaping, it's just grass and a few trees. They make the point that the city would not have to allocate time, labor, or resources to this area because they are the ones keeping it up, and for the same reasons as with the Carter application, this provides us a clear, open corridor, free of obstructions, free of weeds. If we had to get back into that area, and it beautifies a section along a, a well-trafficked corridor trail.
Any discussion?
Here's an image looking north on the property, once again, the yellow line is the property line there. And, yeah, any questions on this one?
Nope. Just, to some extent, this seems like it's repetitive, but looking at the photo, it looks like the tree doesn't, it extends much further into that 20-foot range and lower.
Yeah.
Do we still have room here to get equipment through if we need to?
It should be eight feet from the grass, that, that's the requirement. I assume it would be the same for the trial, trail, as it is our sidewalks, because it's eight feet for the height of the tree, so that would need to be trimmed back to be in compliance, I think.
Yeah, we could require trimming of, of branches as part of the agreement.
So, let me ask a little question, and this has to do with both these properties and reflecting. Are, is it, it's still on the master plan trail to build a trail there someday?
Yes.
I mean, what's the chance of that ever happening, and why wouldn't? Do we need this trail?
It would provide a, a branch of the trail that would go northward toward the city's property by Dry Creek Lake. So the city owns this right here, I'll zoom out a little bit so you can see better. The city owns this right here, and so this would allow us to go up through here, we have an easement with the property owner right here, and we would just need to negotiate something with the property owner of this section here, and with that done, we would have a northward connection along the trail here. I forgot that I can draw. So, up to here. So that is a possibility, much like the other trailways that we have earmarked. When that will happen, we don't know. There's, there's a lot of trails that are in the queue, but it is a possibility.
The other thing we need, there is a sewer line that comes like this through over there, just in case we need to try to be able to get access back in that area, whoever knows, I mean, I don't know if there's ever an issue that comes in there. There, you know, Scott, I think you bring up a good, good, good point, say, is this something we need to keep? Is this something we can look at? This trail here that is coming off the Dry Creek actually is coming back in and then going up like that, so it is, it is, they brought it in quite a bit on the Dry Creek trail. We don't know what's going on at Dry Creek, I think they, as I was watching, the waters come down quite a bit on, on the Dry Creek lake there this last week, I think they're trying to still determine what to do there with that lake, but I think your trail, it just leaves, if there ever is an option, it just leaves an option in the future, if there's any maintenance, or if there is a trail that, that counts in the future, Phil's would like to do something there.
I, and this is a little tangent, and I apologize, but on the Dry Creek, like, I talked to the assistant engineer in Lehigh, I said, what's happening there? He says, well, we're going to put the recreation things in, you can see where they're digging it, but I think it's still just recharging the aquifer.
If they put...
As much as anything.
Once they put, talking about Dry Creek, because I've talked with the mayor there...
Yeah.
They need to then put a fishery in. When they put in those other aspects, they have an agreement with Central Utah Water to be able to have access to that property that they're using, they need to make it a recreational property, and they need to keep fishing it. The problem is, and we're heading in now, Dry Creek is going to dry. The reason it's called a Dry Creek, it dries here in July, it's coming out of, now, and the reason is, is the water share, I think, is it July 7th, I believe, ends coming out of, out of Alpine down Dry Creek. And so that's the water that's going in there, so then they would have to, when I'm talking, they, Lehigh would have to supplement with some of their irrigation water to keep it...
From the canal.
And so they're, from the Murdoch Canal that's right there, they'd have to pump it back in, or they could have, they do have another line that does come down in the area here, and so this kind of depends on what they do there. There is another line that actually is coming right down through this area right here. That is a Lehigh, Lehigh irrigation line, and it's a big pipe. So, I mean, there's, they recognize they've got to fill this lake, and so they're looking at where the line's going to be at, so...
And with regard to this property, even if we decided that we are never, ever, ever, we're absolutely certain we are not putting a trail through there, I would be disinclined to dispose of the property, just because of the access that it gives us up into that wooded area.
That's true, but if we have a fire down in there, you might want to be able to get down there. Any other questions on this? I think they're great questions.
So are you suggesting they're going to put a fire truck down through that?
Or they could get to the very end there, be able to access it.
Very interesting.
I'd like to see it. I would be skeptical about a fire truck.
Oh, okay.
Okay, if there's not, we have, is, we need a motion on, is it...
I'll make that motion. I move that the Highland City Council approve an open space maintenance agreement with Laura Lee, Amu, subject to the following stipulation: All improvement shall be consistent with the proposed maintenance plan submitted with the application.
I'll second that.
Motion by Scott, second by Ron.
Can I ask a little question? If there's only one stipulation, why do we have a one by it? Is that, I mean, I can see if there are two, but I just wondered, okay.
Do we have...
Wondering today. I vote yes.
That passes five to zero, we'll now move on to the Andrews, Enders?
All right, this is an application, this one says Carter again, man. This is the Ander, Applic, Anders' application. They are proposing putting in sod and one tree in this space here, this is in South, Canterbury South subdivision, and this is a city trail right here.
And they're asking permission for that tree they've already put in there?
Yes. I, I can explain a little more about that, I've been in conversation with the applicant. The applicant points out that in her narrative, that there are goat heads and other things that grow, other types of weeds that grow in that patch there of, of city property, popping tires, people who, you know, ride bikes and scooters along that trailway. When, when jogging, it's nice to have shade along the trail, and so she's encouraging the planting of more trees to provide shade. And so that is, that's the gist of her, of her justification, hopefully you read that in the packet, which it was included. So here's an image of the, this is the city's trail, yellow represents the property line, this is the tree. I spoke with her, and she said that that was, that's there, it's not planted, it's just there so it can sit upright and be watered. But she is willing to, to replant the tree in a more permanent spot that is suitable to the city, and a variety of tree that is also acceptable to the city. She offered more honey locust, that's what that is, because that's what else is planted down the, the trail there, however, Josh, our park superintendent, said he does not want more of those, because the roots are too shallow and they could damage the trail. And I spoke to her about that, and she said, yes, she's willing to change it to whatever Josh would direct her toward, and to plant it in a space that's better than that one, that's actually right at the end of a, you can see the, the cuts here in the, in the pathway, this is a telecom utility conduit of some sort underneath there, and so we advised moving that out of the way of that, because if, if they ever need to do some work in that area, they will take out her tree, so...
Or if the internet's not working in the neighborhood, that might be the...
So, the telecom, why didn't they fix that so it looked like it did before? Why do we let utilities just leave things big scars?
How long ago did they do that work, do you know?
Yeah, I definitely think this is something that we should have had them correct, and I don't know if we have a franchise agreement that we can go back on, or it's something that we'll probably have to look with, look at.
Was this Comcast going in? Because this is that area of the city that was underserved with Comcast, this might have been them going in to try to get this area served. Because I remember on their map, this is one of the areas that was not... So it was Comcast going in. Okay, other questions on this or comments?
Mayor, the applicant, when I was discussing this with her and pointed out some of the complications with her request, and, you know, was searching for more clarification on why she planted it where she did and so forth, she asked, yes, she's willing to move the tree, put in a different kind of tree, but she is asking, will the city provide one of the leftover Arbor Day trees for her to use? She had been told if it was on city land, and she was willing to maintain it and plant it, the city would provide a tree. I don't know who she spoke with, she did not identify them. It's a, it's a question she asked. I would not, I, I'm not putting that forth as...
I have good...
As a suggestion, I'm just...
I know there's a city in, a person that lived close by there, I checked with them, and they were, they said they had not spoken with the person about that, so, is that right, Kim?
So...
So what, what the request is, is they've got this tree, it's one that our Parks Department would not like to have planted, because it could, the roots could hurt here. Their request is, hey, we're, we'd like to have a tree here, would the city be willing to donate one of their Arbor trees for me to build it, for, not me, but the applicant to... to build, to plant?
Well, it is city property, and she's willing to maintain it, which is, would be nice, because we're going to be talking about some of the fact we're not maintaining a lot of our trees. I'm not sure that it's a bad suggestion.
Is the tree that is currently not planted there, um, a, a, a variety that we would be willing to sell it in Arbor Day? Sale?
Well, right now Arbor Day sale is in April, so we'd be-
I'm wondering if we could just swap trees.
Or, I don't know if we use these type of trees, do we?
Do we have leftover trees there?
Yes. But we use them in other parks. What the, what we usually do is we go through Arbor Day, we sell the trees to the residents, and those are left over. We then, as we've talked about in some of our, our parkway corridors, where we don't have, trees have died, that's where we take them out and put them out to try to put in, in where some other trees have died, and some of the things that way, so.
Okay, so we, the city uses those trees rather than keeping them there and keeping them alive and reselling them a year later? Okay.
Is that, my understanding is correct, Chris, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, I know last year we still had a few trees that we never ended up planting. And I think we have more leftover trees this year than we have in previous years, so I think we could probably-
Why are we not planting, so the, quite, I guess that will come with our landscaping, why aren't we, we have a lot of dead trees in some of our, you know, roadways, why are we not replacing them? So that, that will be, I'm just saying, is this where we'd like to have a tree, or would we like to have it in another area that's?
It's a public trail.
I, I mean, I'm fine having a tree here. I do know this trail, lots of goat head weeds, cracks along it, so it makes sense, especially because the front of the trail is lined with trees and then the back is not. I don't know if there used to be trees there and they were cut down, but it's up to you guys.
I, I always like to accommodate residents' requests. On this, my concern would be that we have lots of maintenance agreements that we're going to be dealing with in the future. Uh, this is just the beginning of them. And we've had a precedent already that the residents who want trees are willing to put them in at their cost. We start providing the trees, then we start providing the trees.
I agree. I'm just saying, you do it for one, you do it for all.
That's right. If we agree to do it here, we've got to agree on every request, I think, coming forward.
So, I disagree a little bit, and I understand what you're saying, but she's planted a tree there, I'm not sure why she couldn't swap with us. If we're not going to allow that tree, why we can't?
Because I think that we don't know if we want this tree to swap out. I think that's, I understand what you're saying, Scott. I, I think the concern, I'm not sure this is a tree we would plant elsewhere.
But there's a lot of trees in the Arbor Day sale. I've bought some over the years, that you wouldn't plant in, in public spaces.
Josh, are there other areas that you would not mind putting a lotus tree in, in a park? As long as there is no sidewalk near it?
Josh, will you please come to the front by the microphone? Thank you.
Josh is our park superintendent.
That's the hard part with locust trees, is they are very aggressive, and they need to be a ways away from any side of pavement, asphalt, concrete. They do have a great growth, and they grow really well. Um, it's just that if they're in the wrong spot, they just tear things up. So yes, there's probably a spot that it could go. I don't know right offhand where we'd put it, but yes, there's somewhere that it could go.
Thank you. I, I kind of agree with Doug and Scott on this, that if we can trade it out, that's not setting a precedent that we're providing the tree.
No, if we're providing when it's not trading, we're trading.
So yeah, somebody else wants a tree, yeah, you have one you can give us.
Well, it has to be reasonable.
I know, I know, I'm just, I'm just joking. But I, I kind of like going down that road in this particular situation.
I do like it where residents see, though, a need for an area within the city that lacks a shade or has, has an issue like the goat heads there and says, hey, this would be a great spot for a tree. You know, they try and do it first, didn't do it right, but they're, the residents, we have extra trees, and if the residents are the ones who know these are good spots for extra trees, then maybe we should listen to them. But, I don't know. It's up to you guys.
I have a whole bunch along SR 92 that I think would be good shade along the sidewalks. So I'll be getting my list if we put this. I'm just, I'm just, this, this is a, an area, it is a trail, but we have a lot of visible areas that have a lot of trees that are missing also. But I'm just, I think what you're saying, hey, if we can pull this tree out, they'll exchange the tree, that's where I think you're saying, Ron, there might be some workability of pulling that out, and we take that tree and give them a different one. If that's what the council would like to do.
Yeah.
The only two scenarios that I could see being okay with the city providing the tree in this case is, one, if we have a use for this tree, and we can realistically do a swap. Or if we, as a city, decide that this is a spot that we want a tree, and we go in and put in the tree, and then subsequently, they may decide that they want to put in a maintenance agreement to cover it. But I totally agree with Ron and Kurt, that if we announce that implicitly or explicitly that we're paying for trees that people want to put in on public property that abuts their land, then we're going to have an avalanche of requests that suddenly show up.
And that's just Kurt.
I'm going out. Okay, council, do we have a motion here?
Um, the, the stipulation where it says, um, and planted and watered according to guidelines that will reduce the risk, does that include at a location of our choice? Or do we add that in?
When it says superintendent must be approved by the Highland City Park Superintendent and planted and watered according to guidelines, I, I meant that to mean that it'll also be in a spot that is according to his guidelines.
So could we add a third stipulation then, that she could swap out the tree?
Yeah.
I mean, that's not giving her a tree, we're just swapping, trading.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that the Highland City Council approve an open space maintenance agreement with Barbara Anders, subject to the following stipulations. One, all improvements shall be consistent with the proposed maintenance plan submitted with the application. Two, the existing tree must be removed, and the new tree chosen must be approved by the Highland City Park Superintendent and planted and watered according to guidelines that will reduce the risk. The tree will damage the city's trail, branches must be trimmed so as not to interfere with passage along the trail. And three, stipulation three, that the existing tree can be traded for one of the trees from the city Arbor Day sale, if so chosen.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Scott, second by Ron. Any clarification or discussion? Scott?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. We'll now move on to the next item, which is an action item, which is speed limit policy. Uh, that will be you, Chris, trustee.
No, we have four maintenance-
Oh, I'm sorry, we have another main-
Maintenance agreement. The Roberts application, and sorry, I'm just trying to find the map here. Oh my gosh, that did not work the way I wanted it to. Okay. Since we're in a whole different section of the city, I just wanted to orient you here. We are looking at Jupiter Circle. The trailway in question that this parcel is along is this one here. And the house, I believe, is this one right here. So. Uh, all the, all this resident wants to do is put down some sod. Uh, it would be placed between, in the red area there, between their property and the city's trail, just to help with weeds, um, out their back door, backyard, whatever you want to call it. In their justification, which was included in your packet, along the asphalt walking path, they would like to have a section of well-maintained grassy area. It would just be grass. It would be watered by them as, as required, but it would not, there would be no water lines going into city property. Uh, this image here is facing south. You can see, uh, this grassy section is, is the city's property, and they've already started working on their property. You can see a bit of the, uh, the city's rail fence, which is what, the applicant has requested that be removed. We are recommending not taking that down. It stretches for about eight houses, and having a gap in that would be odd-looking. And there's no, they say it's dangerous, it's not dangerous, it just, there's a section of it that does need to be repaired, and we can make that happen. Here's another image, and you can see there in the middle, that's, there is just a section where the, the rail holding up, or the post holding up the rails, um, it's, it's wood, and it just broke, and so they slid out, and that can be repaired easily. Um, this is a, a north-facing image of, of the section in question for this request.
So let me ask a question. I should know the answer to this, but between their lot, which you have on the mat, and this red space, that area in there, is that surplus land that they bought? And so this will be contiguous when it's done, the landscaping? And, um, why is that wood fence important?
Anybody? I would say to delineate between private property and city property.
Do we have something better? That, that fence is not allowed in our current fence code, is it?
I, I think the developer put it up when they were putting it in along this, the trail system there, so I think you can't have, along the trail system, it has to be open fence, and I think that was their concept.
Highland Glen has this same type of fence around it. So at some point, these rail fences were put in, but I'm wondering if, just, I, I don't know, just to accommodate the owner, I guess, and make it easier for that owner, if it could be removed and, and do all the moving of the dirt that they want, and get it level, and get it planted, and then put it back in.
Or something similar.
Yeah.
That meets our code.
I think, what, what is the thought, I mean, is, like you said, is, is the, they just want the fence gone? Or is the property owner don't want, they don't want a fence so it looks like it's all their property? Does that make sense? It, it, that, that's the question, is I think what you're saying, hey, take the fence up, but you got to put something back in. I don't think it's unreasonable. But I, I don't know if the applicant was hoping to have the fence gone so it looks like their whole yard goes down the trail and the public property is, is, is their property. Does that make sense? We don't know what there's some, what they were hoping for.
But what you're saying, Mayor, is true. However, it's hard to make a supposition on what's going through other people's heads, but I guess when I look at that fence, I say, it's broken down, and so it needs to be repaired. And so I just think if it's going to, we want the city to keep it there, we need to repair it and fix it, and maybe come up with something that actually meets our code now.
I don't, you know, Josh, do you have any idea why that fence was there like that?
Well, he's coming up. I think that that does actually meet our code, that the, it is open and permitted materials include wood.
There's a fence like this also along, along the trail, like those to the 9600 North. We ran into that.
What's our historical, you've been with this for like 18 years?
Yes, so, um, that property, we have a water line that goes from 11800 up to that subdivision, up to the grass there, so we have a water line in there. When that previous property was sold, on the weekend, one of the houses decided to use dump trucks to access their property. And then devastated the trail, and we got stuck with the bill, and we put the fence in to help keep people from accessing their backyard from our property.
So I guess my question is to the attorney, if someone came with a fence permit saying, I'm going to put in a split rail fence like this, would you be eager to approve it?
Yes.
Okay. So I think, I just think as a member of the council, we need to fix the fence. If it's this important, I think we need to fix it.
We'll fix it tomorrow.
Doesn't it say that that's one of the things, is the city knows it needs to be fixed, and they'll do that?
Any other questions on Josh and the specific guy with the fence? Okay, thank you, Josh. You see, you're helpful to have here. Counsel, what would you like to do? I mean, like, like, there's been comments about have them take down the fence and they can put up a new fence or keep the existing fence. What is the recommendation, or what do you would like to see here?
I think that it, it sounds like we need to have a fence there. Sounds like the style of the fence needs to match along that entire length of it. I, I don't have a huge objection to the fence coming down for putting things in and then putting it back, although I'm not entirely sure that that's a necessary thing if we were just talking about putting in some grass.
My only concern, if they take it down, are they going to access in the back of their property from our trail and come up and hurt it? That's, that would be my only concern, is why do they need to take the fence down? I'm just-
Yeah, I'm just looking at what they're doing and the grading that they're doing, and it would be nice if that was all level and the fence delineated it, but it would, they'd be level on both sides. To try to degrade the one side and then come back and grade this side, um, to have it match, I, I don't know how doable that is, but.
So, so help me on the city's side, they, they, are you saying, Ron, have them grade the city property?
No, they're going to have to take those weeds out, and, and it looks like they're, they're grading the other side. So they're not going to change the grade, but they're going to have to have a blade of something come down and take all that out to put the grass in. When you put grass down, you don't put it on top of stuff like this. You've got to get this out of there. So how are they going to get that out of there if that fence is in the way?
So it'd be fun to go look at this, because I think the house just south of this, and they bought the property, and there was a big debate about the fence that they put up there, and it had to meet certain criteria. So I'm not sure why they couldn't put their own fence on the edge of their property if it met the criteria. Isn't, isn't the, the fence just, there's a fence just south?
You're correct.
Yeah.
But they had, that was a stepping back, if you remember, it was-
Yeah, we had to do stepping back, there was quite a controversy, that happened five years ago. But these people could put a fence there if they wanted. I mean, I don't know why it has to be this split, as long as there's a fence.
And there was a question about whether or not they would be grading the public land. That the narrative says that they anticipate the possibility of some slight grading. It, it says, we expect, expect little to no grading to be required.
I would actually refer to it as blading it. You take a blade across there and get those weeds out of there so that you've got dirt to put the grass on.
Yeah, I agree with Ron on that, too. I mean, we don't want them to tear up the trail, that's the big concern. We don't want the, if the trails turn up, then they need to repair it. And, uh, but, you know.
Counsel, what would you like to do here?
What does staff think?
We're fine with it within the conditions that, with the stipulations in the, listed in the staff report, we feel like it's okay. Honestly, I feel like it's a good idea to leave the fence to deviate. I, either we sell it, either it's private property or it's public, right? And I mean, it's still public property, we still want that trail corridor, and so I think, you know, taking away the fence maybe temporarily is fine, but you would need to restore that fence, would be my recommendation, because the, the more you change that, the more it starts to feel like you have private property.
Well, there needs to be some sort of fence there, like their neighbor to the south, but I don't know if it has to be a split rail fence.
It's just, you want to take away, and like, you've got that kind of fence on either side, do you want something different there in, in the middle of it?
No, unless we're going to change the fence along the entire eight properties, I, I don't think we want to require a different fence here. I think we just have them restore the fence, um, once they're finished with the, what they're going to do with their property and our property.
I would make sure it's in the stipulation they cannot use the trail to access to do construction. I just, I, I just see-
Yeah, they're already grading up here, so they've obviously already got access without using the trail. Because that's, that's cat work that's been up there, moving that dirt and making that retaining wall area there. So, I don't, I, I agree, we can put the stipulation in.
I like keeping the same fence there. And I agree with not accessing it for, to do their improvements that way.
If we said so moved, would you have everything you need?
No.
Can we step forward a slide to look at the proposed motion?
Yeah.
So are we talking about, um, two additional stipulations? One, that the fence can temporarily be removed but must be restored afterward. And two, that access for construction can't be through the back side of the property?
But by restoration, are you insisting that they put the same fence in? Because their neighbors to the south, they may come in with a proposal saying, we want a fence like the neighbors to the south.
Correct.
So I, I, I think you can stipulate the, they should have some sort of fence there, but I don't think you can come in and say it has to be the split rail.
I, I agree, Scott. Cause if you have an, if you have an application coming in, that's my question. You would not require, they could pull that fence out right now on that property and put it...
That fence is not our property.
Right.
It's not on the property line. It's actually a little bit in. So the fence to the south, they built it and our fence still is right next to theirs.
Oh, so our fence still exists there.
Yeah, the fence is still there. In addition to...
So it's double safe.
Yeah.
We need double fences in the Highland.
Belt and suspenders.
Yeah.
Counsel, you're working on a motion. What would you like? I think you're close to motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council approve an open space maintenance agreement with Craig Roberts, subject to the following stipulations. One, all improvement should be consistent with the proposed maintenance plan submitted with the application, except for the request that the city's fence be removed. Two, that the city's fence may be temporarily removed while the work is being done, but must be replaced afterward. And three, that no access for construction can cross the city's property on the backside of the residence property.
Is there a date, a deadline date of when they have to replace that fence? Cause they could do it 10 years from now.
Within one year.
Within a month of it coming down?
Thirty days. Good. I'll second that. You have a motion by Doug, second by Ron. Okay, do you have everything you're needing, Stephanie?
Councilmember Courtney, can I ask for a clarification?
She just wants to verify.
Can I ask for a clarification? So would that be a fourth stipulation that you're saying that within a month of the fence being down, it needs to go back up again?
That could either be part of the second one or be a fourth stipulation. I, I was thinking of it as being part of the second.
Part of the third.
That the fence can come down temporarily for no more than 30 days while they're doing the work, but then must be replaced.
Thank you.
Is that what everyone else understood?
Yep.
I, I disagree with 30 day limit. Why would you just stay 30 days? Why don't you give them a little bit of time? Cause they're gonna have to get somebody in there to do all the maintenance work, get sprinklers and everything. You're gonna make them put the fence up before they can get the lot improved? I mean, it just seems like we need to give them a little more wiggle room.
I'm okay with a larger number of folks think of it. To me, to me, the only reason for taking the fence down is to do the improvements on the city property.
Right.
And it seemed like 30 days was more than enough for that. But I'm okay with 90 days if...
Is everyone agreeable to that adding of the 90 days?
I just think you need a little, give them some time to do it.
Scott, are you agreeable to the 90 days?
Yeah, that'll be fine. It's just, it's hard to get service people in on a timeframe sometimes. And so they'd be have to put the fence up.
Like, for example, the power company?
Yeah.
Just as a clarification, all they're doing on city property though is, is, what did you call it? Grading, or not grading, blading and then putting sod down. No sprinklers are going on our property. So, um, I think 90 days is more than sufficient, I would estimate.
I, I agree.
Now with that, so everyone is agreeable to the amendment of adding 90 days to the motion. So with that, we'll still move forward with that motion.
It's a friendly one?
It was a friendly one.
Yeah?
Friendly. It was, it was, what?
I'll second it. I don't think I second it.
No, it was done by, this last one, it was done by Doug and second by Ron.
Okay.
Yes.
Passes five to zero. We have it up there. Okay, now we do, we've died in number C, which is speed limit policy. Chris Rusty, and this is the speed limits across the city.
So we talked a little bit about speed limit policies a, a couple council meetings ago. I think, uh, local roads, we would always expect to be speed limited to 25 miles per hour. Uh, but where some of the questions come up is on collector roads. We, we, we have three different definitions for collector roads within our, our city code right now. We have a neighborhood collector road, which has a statutory speed limit of between 25 and 30 miles per hour. Then we have minor collector roads that have statutory speeds between 30 and 35, and then major collector roads between 35 and 40. And so the thought with this, uh, policy that we, we wanted to discuss is to look at, at what point does the neighborhood collector road be signed at 25 miles per hour? Or when would we want it to be 30 miles per hour? And, uh, same with the, the minor and major. Under which circumstances would we want the lower of the allowable speeds? And what circumstances would we want the higher of the allowable speeds?
Chris?
Yes?
Those statutory limits, are those in our code or is that state code?
That is in our code.
Our code? Okay, thanks.
So we kinda came up with a, a table when we talked before that we presented to council where we wanted to look at some of the conditions of, of the roads to help us make those determinations. Uh, the seat, the, the thought was that speed limits would be set based on an evaluation of the road width, the traffic counts, road geometry, uh, the number of driveways, and uh, software, uh, called US Limits 2 Evaluation, which takes a look at some of these conditions, but it also looks at, at traffic accidents along those roads. And it makes its own, uh, evaluation of the road and makes a recommendation for the speed limit on that. Uh, we, we did feel like that software just by itself also had some limitations though. I think it seemed like it weighed a little bit heavier than we might want to on the 85th percentile speeds, uh, which are a great way for probably more rural communities to set speed limits, but not necessarily appropriate to set speed limits based on just because 85% of the traffic is going that fast doesn't necessarily mean that that's what the road should be, uh, limited to.
One of the variables that seems to me to be important that's not in here, and that is the lane width. Because we can control the lane width, and by so doing, it's a traffic calming, um, opportunity. And if we go down to 10 feet, even nine foot lanes, we're going to, that comes back to the safest speed is the speed that people are most comfortable driving, given the environment they're driving in. That's a concept that I believe is true. And if it's a more narrow lane, they're more comfortable driving slower. Uh, and so the lane widths of all these things, I think need to be factored in. And, and by factoring it in, I mean, it gives us then control to say, we've got Canal Boulevard. If we narrow the lanes in this section that we know we have more accidents than other areas, if we narrow that lane, we're gonna slow that traffic down. And then the speed limit would then be adjusted according to that.
I kinda look at it a, a little bit differently than that. I would say that we would set speed limits based on how wide the road is. And then, uh, narrowing lanes would be more of a traffic calming so that when we do have vehicles that are speeding, um, beyond that, we would want to narrow up the lanes so that it would act as a traffic calming and, and slow them down. So...
Can I make a comment about your table?
Yes.
I think this is very helpful. But, um, you know, if you apply this to like the east end of Canal Boulevard between Alpine Highway and North County, um, certainly the traffic count's up over 10,000 there, which we didn't think would happen when we did the road study. But it, it's a curvilinear road. It's not a straight road. And, and, and that needs to take, be taken into account because there's been a number of wrecks there because of the curves. Cause the curves were designed to slow the traffic, but people don't drive slower. And I drive that road two or three times every day, that little section. I drove it two hours ago, two and a half hours ago. And I had people, I, and I was driving a little bit over the speed limit, I'll admit, but I had people on my bumper. And, and if, if I don't drive above the speed limit there, they pass illegally down the center lane. And I've been there a couple times when there's been accidents. So I think you need to take in the fact that if a road's curvilinear and Canal Boulevard is the whole distance, that that should affect the speed as much as anything. Because those curved roads are not as safe as a straight road.
Sure, absolutely.
So maybe you can kinda help, just so the public knows, we know. I, I remember we had a map that had all the different speeds in the city. Okay, a local road, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. That's your roads inside your neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Now you say neighborhood collector. Share with what roads they would be.
So typically, neighborhood collector would be a, a, a local road within a subdivision, but it'd be almost like a branch that would connect the subdivision to more of a collector road. So it would be kind of the main access that you would take off of one of our, more of a collector road to get into the subdivision. And then from there, there's usually roads that branch off in, in different directions.
Then we have our, our minor. Is it easier to say, hey, these are our major collectors? Cause everything else would be minor or?
Yeah. I, I think most of what we have would probably be considered a minor collector, but the biggest difference there is, is the, the width of the road that we have, um, the 66 feet.
Okay, so let's go through, on a minor, would 9600 North, would that be classified a minor collector?
No, I think that would be, that's, that's a narrower road.
That's what I'm saying. It doesn't feel like a minor, but, so that would be a neighborhood collector?
Well, let's see. I think what we have for the width on, I, I have that further on, on the, on the table. But that's the table that, no, actually, yeah, I do have that width. Let me see if I can find it real quick.
I think what you're pulling up, we had a study done of all, I guess it's the east-west roads, 96, Canal, 10400 and 111800, I believe, is what, and so that's, that kinda helped us know where our speeds were at, what we were seeing. Surprisingly, what came up, our least safe road appears to be 9600 North.
Right.
When you say least, so it's, it's the one where we have the most speeding on?
Speeding, above what, what we believe the conditions should be.
Above the speed limit.
Yeah, we have more driveways on 9600. We have, the speed was, was a little more of a concern there.
But not necessarily the rubber we have the most accidental in.
Right. Chris, were you trying to look up the pavement width on 96? 9600?
I'm trying to look at the, the right of way width that we have. And it depends on where you're at. Um, where I'm looking at right now, it's, it's, it's about 56 feet.
You don't, we don't see it here in front of us.
I, I had a, I just pulled up the US part, or the Utah County parcel maps because I don't think it was...
Have it up here. Yeah, I have. I have Google Maps up. I'll have...
While we were bringing that up, Chris, the US Limits 2 concerns that we have, is that typically that they would be recommending a higher speed limit than we think is appropriate, rather than the other way around?
That, that is our concern, is that they would be recommending higher speed limits. I was just trying to measure the, the width of 9600, the right of way width.
For those of you who have never used this before, you can measure all sorts of interesting things on the Utah County parcel maps.
Yeah, I think if you...
You're gonna wanna turn on Ariel so you can see the whole right of way.
Scroll to the east, I think. There's, but that's where it makes it a little bit hard because you'll see that there's a big part of the road that's not really dedicated as part of the right of way.
I was just gonna ask about that.
Okay. Which is pretty common throughout the city. We, we do have a lot of roads that are like that.
So even the wide parts, only 45, 6.
That's, yeah, that's the asphalt width.
If you go to, is it back of sidewalk that you'd ride away, consider?
Yeah.
Yeah. When we're looking at the numbers on that earlier table, it's back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Finding a section with both sides having sidewalk is another challenge.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one right there.
Yeah, a little bit right there. There's sidewalk there on both sides.
You wanna do back of sidewalk?
Back of. There we go, 65 feet.
I know when we approved the little two lot subdivision that annexed in, they had to dedicate property to the city to get to 66. Well, it was a 56 foot right of way, except it wasn't actually, cause they didn't have the top half. So they had to dedicate some property of the southern half to get the street wider, but it's, it's weird.
So based on the width, it would be considered the minor collector. And, and based on the, uh, the average daily traffic, it's around 1700. So it's, it's kind of on the, that fits more within the neighborhood collector than what, what the traffic that we would expect to see in that, a little bit on the low side for a minor collector.
And honestly, the, um, road width, when we say that it fits the, a minor collector rather than a neighborhood collector, we're looking at the widest part of the road.
Right, at this point, yep.
Yeah.
But most of it isn't that wide right now.
Correct. There's a lot of places where it's not. And, and it obviously kinda goes in and out too. But it is straight.
So, so that's, so what we're talking about, counsel, is what speed, as we look at the classification here, would we, I think that's what we're looking for, is what speed we're hoping to maybe kinda say, hey, this is what we'd like to do in our roads, be consistent. Cause like, you know, I, I noticed when we looked at the speed maps, there were some roads that were 35 miles an hour, then you had others that were only 30 or 25. You know, there's inconsistency, uh, on the different, like if it's a minor collector or things that way, there's inconsistency in the city. Are you wanting to keep it as is? Or would you like to address saying all minor roads are going to be at 25? Or all minor roads are gonna be at 30 or 35?
I think that this stuff, I think this is very nice. I think it should be a guideline more than a policy. Because the thing is, is we can look at it, but each neighborhood, for example, on Canal Boulevard, each section's different. And it's been built at different times and, and different things. So does one, one speed limit fit all? And, you know, we've heard a proponent just to say, leave it all 30 or 25 or whatever, but maybe not. So they, and I bring this up quite a bit. We've got the Alpine Highway that goes down to American Fork. When, when you're in Highland, because we don't have a lot of homes, I mean, it's 45. When you get down to American Fork a little bit, it's 40, then it's 35. By the time you get downtown, it's down to 30. And it's pretty heavily enforced, I know, cause I've been picked up there. And, uh, and, and North County Boulevard's a little bit that way too, because as you get in American Fork, the speed limit drops and it's enforced. And so, you know, we have precedent in other cities where you could have a variable speed limit for, in the, like the west end of Canal Boulevard, that's very residential. And, so it shouldn't be above 25 in my opinion. And it's curvilinear. But you get up to maybe 6,000 or that, maybe it can be 30, but it's curvilinear too. So I think you have to kinda look at each. These are nice guidelines, but I think in the end, we're gonna have to look at each road, have input from the citizens and come up with kinda, do we wanna be at the high end or the low end of these speed limits? And, you know, I, I don't know what to do about the section, cause I talk about it all the time where I live, on Canal Boulevard, but nobody's driving the speed limit there. When I try to drive it, people go crazy. It, it's the weirdest thing I've been around. And yet we have lots of accidents. So we've got to come up with some traffic speed mitigation there, whether it's flashing signs. And I worry about, we... And I worry about, we need a crosswalk across, from Featherstone goes over there, because Willibang's being used a lot now. And if we have people racing through there at 40 miles an hour, there's going to be a major tragedy. So I don't know, we need to look at each section, I think.
I agree with you, Scott. I just feel like I don't have the expertise to be able to determine what the speed limits are, or what safety mitigation needs to be there.
We have the guidelines, but I think we can decide, working with the staff.
Yeah, I think that's the key word, Fraser, is working with staff, that they can guide us to say, okay, you know, this is a research we've done, and then this is what we recommend putting into place with our expertise.
So let me, we've been talking about this for quite a while. I mean, we've had maps come in, we've went and done studies and things. What is it we now want staff to do, or what is it, because we keep saying, let's make a decision. We have a map that has all the speeds throughout the city. Do we want to have a night where we go and say, this, I want to have 6400 at 30, you know, it's 35, it should only be 30? Do we want to look and say, okay, Canal should be at 25 or 30, or whatever it might be? I mean, are, what is it, when and where are we doing that? I mean, is it tonight you want to do it? Do you want to, when would you like to do it?
I don't think tonight, but I think I'd just love to, you know, come back and say, I mean, we have staff recommendation of their speed limit.
And I thought, I think, kind of what staff had anticipated is that we would determine if we want to set this as a policy or a guideline, but we would ask the council to kind of make that determination and see if this is a tool that you would like us to add to our traffic calming toolbox as an appendix to that. And then we would bring forth at the next council meeting any recommendations for changes of speed limits.
Yes.
Do you have recommendations tonight for Canal Boulevard?
We do.
Okay, that's coming.
That will be coming.
Okay.
I don't want to get ahead of ourselves.
Yes, good.
But just to make sure council is looking at what Chris has just put on the screen, our recommendation, based on this policy or guideline, whatever we want to call it, policy or guideline, the recommendation would be on Canal Boulevard to go to 35 miles per hour, just on the east section, so east of Alpine Highway. Yeah.
And I think that's reasonable, but I will fight it unless you come up with some other traffic mitigation things. We need flashing speed lights, and we need crosswalks, because you're going to have a lot of people on the north side of Ridgeview, they're going to try to get across that road. And at the top of that hill, right now, we've got a flashing light, but I see people crossing constantly there. And we've got to slow the traffic through that area, there's going to be a tragedy.
So Chief Graham, I have a question. Scott said that he wants flashing lights. Now, let me, I've seen in some communities.
On the crosswalk.
I know, but I've seen in some communities, we have these little yellow lights that flash. But I've been in a couple of communities also, I'm looking up, goes, is that a police officer? But it was really one of these areas where they're either warning you to slow down, but they were like police, police lights. Have you seen anything like that?
Oh, red and blue ones?
Yeah.
I haven't seen red and blues. I've seen yellows and ambers on crosswalks or for traffic calming, but not the red and blue.
It was actually up in the Wyoming area. I was just up there last weekend, and I was just going, sir, police officer, going, oh, it's their traffic mitigation they're trying to do. But it caught my, it was different, I'm just, I don't know if that's against.
Was that on a speed sign that was telling you how fast your speed was?
Yes, it was a feedback sign.
So there is one in, it's actually in Pleasant Grove, if you, it's 2600 north in Pleasant Grove. They have one both east and west that will show you your speed. If you're above the speed limit, it will flash red and blue at you.
So it's not against the law to have red and blue on something like that? I'm just, guys, that caught my attention, it was so unique. Now, you know, I'm just, that's one aspect. You know, we've talked about that, you know, one of the problems, and we'll talk about Canal here in a bit, but I mean, we can talk through that, but we've been talking a lot about traffic mitigation. But to be honest, the residents are here, let's go through what we really said. In January, I think we said, or even we said on the first of March, we need the first of April to get to it. Well, now we're the first of July. You know, I mean, I understand their frustration, you know, and so, so we have Canal Boulevard, we can talk about it here in another agenda item. Where do we want to go with this traffic thing? Tell me what we're trying to do here. Chris, what were you hoping for? Do we need to come up with a policy saying, hey, we adopt this, what is it we're looking for?
I think we adopt it only as a guideline, though. I don't think we lock ourselves into this. And Canal, I could not agree more wholly with Scott. I don't want 35 on Canal until we have those mitigation, traffic calming devices in place and operational, maybe operational for a couple of months, and then we can look at changing it. Well, it's got to be enforced, because the problem is, is you, if you raise the speed limit there, then people drive five miles faster. And I've seen cars flipped over in the winter, it's kind of that. So the rest of Canal, and so on, Chris, just explain, why wouldn't you say Canal Boulevard West using your guidelines? Why wouldn't that be 25? West of 6,000.
I think.
Because it's very residential, it's curvilinear.
It is curvilinear.
You've got a lot of driveways that come out on it.
Yeah, but when you look at other driveways that we have on other roads, it has much fewer driveways than, let's say, 10-400 or 9600.
The west end doesn't, the old.
Oh, it does, the west end only, I think, has like 11 driveways in total. You know, east of 6800 west, obviously, if we go west of there, there's more driveways, but I want to say that we counted like 11 driveways along that length.
Madison.
Yeah.
On Madison Avenue.
Yeah.
I agree with Scott on Madison. That was 25 before Canal was completed. That was 25, and we raised it to 30. I'm just not clear why we would raise it to 30. Why not get it back to 25, which is what it's historically been? I drive that, every time I go to Costco, I intensely drive. And by the way, I drive the speed limit, and I force myself to do that, only because I want to get a feel for how realistic all this is. And I'm constantly being passed illegally, and I've got people tailgating me.
Especially on the east side.
But that particular section, I can drive 25 in that section and feel comfortable doing it. It's a residential area, it was Madison Avenue, it still is Madison Avenue, it's not really Canal Boulevard. It's Madison Avenue, it was 25 before, I don't know why we can't make it 25 again.
I think we would want Chief William to speak to this. Another concern staff had is you change a speed limit on a road too often, it's confusing for drivers, and it's hard to enforce ultimately. If any of you have ever been pulled over because, you know, a road was one speed limit, and you missed the sign that said it, you know, it lowered, I think you can think of that. So you almost need, in my recommendation, if you wanted to do something like that, you would need a larger section than just Madison to be realistic about people going down to 25.
But our neighboring cities don't have any problem, Erin. Harvey Boulevard, which is the other end of Canal Boulevard, not only is 25, they have flashing signs, but they have speed tables. So, you know, American Fork can do it, Cedar Hills can do it, I'm not sure that we can do it.
I, to just jump in here, I agree with what Erin's saying, and to address your comment about Harvey Boulevard, that's a larger section than we're talking about with Madison. And it has natural breaks in it with other intersections that you have to come up to and stop, and then when you proceed into that area, it drops to 25.
That's actually one thing that I would like to see changed with the guidelines. And if we're talking, if we're looking at approving them as guidelines instead of a policy, there are some other things I'd like to change if we're looking at it as a policy. But it is frequency of speed limit changes on a street, and especially avoiding cases like we have on 6,000, but where we drop and then go back up as you continue down the street. It seems much less problematic to me, the Alpine Highway situation, where it is a constant increase or a constant decrease as you're driving along it.
That makes sense.
We're not, oops, we're not asking you to decide definitely on Canal Boulevard tonight. We're asking, are you ready to adopt these as guidelines? And then later in the meeting, we'll talk specifically about Canal Boulevard, the recommendations that we have as far as speed limit and traffic calming, because we agree with Councilmember Smith, we need some more traffic calming there. But then, but that would be a future action item.
I want to point out, I think one thing that does lead to not necessarily a 25 mile per hour speed limit is that road is like 74 feet wide. It meets our definition of a wider road that actually statutorily would have a speed limit of between 35 and 40.
Correct. Because when I went and measured, that's what was going on. So council, if you look at the staff recommendation, what we're saying is that would maybe be recommended where we kind of sit with the speed at this time. Is that any concerns with what's being recommended there?
And we're not strictly.
On the table, or, I'm sorry.
Is it the table you're talking about, Mayor, or are you talking about the latest thing?
Well, we got the current table, you got the staff recommendation for speed here. Everyone seemed to be okay with Canal Boulevard East.
Why don't you go back to the, in that little white box there is what we're wondering, if you're ready to approve maybe as a guideline instead of a policy.
I would be okay with approving that. I would, if we approve it as it is tonight, then I would really like for us to come back and add in something about speed limit changes along a single street. I don't think that's something we probably want to amend this evening, because I think it wants a little more discussion than that. But I would like to see that as part of a guideline eventually.
Bring them all back at the same time, where you have that and this, or do you want to approve this tonight?
I think if we approve this tonight, we at least get this ball rolling. And then we can tweak it and add to it as we move on. But you feel it should be a guideline, not a policy? Absolutely, it's a guideline.
I think that if we want it to be a policy, we would need to, my opinion, have as our policy that we will always use the US Limits II recommendation, but have a set of cases that if these situations exist, we may drop it down by five miles an hour, and perhaps another set of criteria, or if there are more of the criteria that are met, we may drop it down by 10. To me, if we're really setting a policy, it needs to be something a little more concrete than that. But I'm perfectly good approving this as a guideline, I think that's really useful for the city.
I don't think anybody wants a policy on this.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that the city council adopt the speed limit policy.
Guideline?
Guideline, the speed limit guideline for inclusion in the traffic calming manual.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote on that.
So it's definitely guideline.
Guideline, guideline. Even though it says up there, motion for limit, speed limit, it's not, it's a guideline, not a policy. Ron, you able to get in?
Okay.
Scott?
Yes.
That passes five to zero.
Is nobody going to make a Pirates of the Caribbean joke this whole time, policy versus guideline? I'm just saying.
Okay, we do have one item on our expedited. We have item number 5A, which is the Baker Construction of, for the Hanover Way sewer repair.
Yeah, so we have a sewer repair that we've talked to the city council about previously, just to make you aware, but we became aware of a sewer line that has a belly in it, a low spot. So sewers kind of started back up, and we've had the fun time of having to clean that out, which isn't as fun as it might sound. After investigating.
Which is a kind of impressive statement to make.
It looks like it's the result that we've had from infiltration from a 36-inch culvert that goes basically right over the sewer line. So we put together some bid documents to remove the culvert that has gaps in all of the section connection points to install 42 feet of sewer line, reinstall another 24 feet of 36-inch concrete culvert, and then also include a steel casing for the sewer line, which would help it kind of bridge the culvert, so that if there is any leaking in that area in the future, we wouldn't have the same problems that we have now. We received two bids for this project. I do have a diagram that's really hard to see on this, but it's a cool picture nonetheless. We've got, we got two bids for this. The low bid was for Baker Construction for 93. The other bid you can see was well above that. We did send this out to seven different contractors. These were the only two that returned bids within a timely manner. We did get one that was, I think, three or four days late that we had to reject, because he didn't give it to us in time, and it wouldn't be fair to our other contractors who did submit those in time.
So with the 10%. Chris, just to be, since we put that up, just to avoid confusion, could you explain the Alt. 1 to folks?
Yeah, so Alt. 1 is a deduction to reuse the concrete culvert pipe. If they can get in there, and they can remove that, pull it out, set it aside, and reuse it, then we will get a credit back. Because we don't know the condition of the pipe until we really get in there and have it removed and exposed. The recommendation is that we award the full bid amount, but it would be a deductive change order at the end of the project if we can reuse that.
So that's why we're talking about the 93.9 instead of a 91.5, even though the 91.5 is a smaller number on the screen.
And at the very bottom, where you normally see the total, so, yeah, sorry for the confusion in that case.
That's just in case they can't reuse it.
Just in case they can't reuse it.
Got it.
That might actually be wrong, yeah. So with the 10% contingency that we usually add, the grand total was $103,332.17.
Mayor, I'll make the motion. So I move the Highland City Council award the bid to Baker Construction in the amount of up to $103,332.17. 17 cents?
Yes.
Okay, for the Hanover Way sewer repair.
I'll second that. Yeah, a motion by Scott, second by Ron, we'll go ahead and we'll go to vote. Scott?
Yes.
That passes five to zero.
I'd like to know if this eventually costs that 17 cents, that's.
Okay, our next one is a discussion item only. This is concerning the baseball field rental cost and policy update. This will be Jay, and also Kim, Councilmember Kim Riddell. I know they've met with different individuals and discussed this, so I'll turn the time to both of them.
All right, so to give you some background, council met at the April meeting and talked about some of the desires they had for the nature of field use in general, and then specifically about the baseball field use, the new one at Highland Family Park. I took that information and brought it to some meetings we had with, we had, we met with American Fork's Parks and Rec staff. They have several baseball fields. Their Parks and Rec director is actually a Highland resident, Derek. He was most generous with his time to meet with us, me and Kim, to go over what they do, why they do it, some things that we want to be aware of, maybe some pitfalls that we want to try to avoid. And so by doing that, we came up with a policy. Well, and then we met with Josh and with Erin, and brought that to a broader group, and once again, took into account some of their feedback and concerns, and came up with the draft policy that was in your packet. For an overview of those who need a refresher, teams can reserve fields for games starting in January. The reason why we start in January is so there's plenty of time for teams to be able to reserve fields as they desire. It would give us staff time to perform needed verifications. One of the directions from the April meeting was to get rid of, something is popping. The, one of the desires that came out of the April meeting was to have, to do away with the resident, non-resident rate. And that has been an issue with reservations, because individuals are not able to reserve a field or a pavilion, in this case. We're talking about fields, so I'll keep it fields. They couldn't reserve a field online and know right away that they had it, because there had to be a manual verification by a city staff member to ensure that that person who was reserving was either a Highland resident or not, and charged them the appropriate rate. With this, we're doing away with that distinction as far as the pricing goes. But one thing we are doing or recommending to do is that when it comes to a team, say they want a, they want, two teams want to reserve Highland Family Park field on April 20th, and they want the same time slot, how do you resolve that? What we came up with is the team that has a greater number of Highland residents playing on that team will get priority, they'll get the priority spot. They'll get the priority spot. And we will, so when they register, when they try to reserve a field in January, they will be, they will need to submit a roster with addresses of their Highland residents or of all their players and will know how many are Highland residents and can make our determinations based off of that.
This is only in January. So what happens if they come in February and they want to be a team on the same time that they have more Highland residents? Does that make sense? Is it coming in the reservation the same time? Is it, can they come in in February and so I have more Highland residents and bump the other team out?
They wouldn't bump a January reservation, but in February, the general public can reserve. So, you know, a family reunion that wants to have a, you know, family baseball time, softball time, whatever, they would be able to reserve then as well as other, other teams. To make a distinction, we are not letting leagues schedule. The teams have to do the scheduling so that we don't have entire leagues taking over and co-opting our fields.
So could one team come in if they have a lot of Highland residents and reserve every Friday night? Or Saturday, or every Monday night?
Fridays are excluded, aren't they?
I mean, that is a possibility, yes.
I think we did a limit on there so that we were limiting a team-
Yeah, there's a limit. They have, they can only do like two or something.
Two to four hours a week. I can't remember what our limit was on that.
And I think, didn't we say leagues can reserve games but not practices?
Yeah. So like you have our MSB and, you know, they could reserve, they do double headers Saturday games and they'll probably approach us. They do a lot of their games at Burgess and all over the county, so they'll probably approach asking if they could use one of our fields for a Saturday double header. And a lot of their teams and residents, Highland City residents are on their leagues or part of their team. WBL is another one, and the teams will probably approach and also ask to use the fields during the weekday for their league games as well. And that could be, you know, determined as well on the percentage of residents. And then there's Lone Peak as well that can reserve for games as well, and that can be based off of the percentage of residents, but we'll charge as well for them. I do, I do have a, one recommendation on this, just in talking with some of the teams and leagues. Usually they have to have their time slots for games scheduled in November, as far in advance as November for spring leagues.
Okay.
So that's something we should maybe look into.
Yeah, I think we chose November because, or January, because that sounded reasonable. If November is what, what these teams need, I, I'm definitely willing to be reasonable and make it work for them, so.
This will be kind of your first, you know, you do one year test, say, okay, this is what we've learned. I mean, this is our first time having such nice fields, so.
And this is a draft document. We are not brainstorming from scratch, but we've got a document to work with. But yes, you know, as Kim recommended, let's move it from January to November. That is totally fine. As we, as we discussed tonight, please give any and all recommendations and thoughts that you have.
First, I'd like to thank Councilmember Rodella and Jay, all the work that you've put into this. I mean, this is a major thing. I've come to the city offices and seen Kim here because she's meeting with whoever to hone all this down and present it to us. The only question I have is, does this address the concerns that Liz Rice had concerning tournaments? Do we expect tournaments coming?
So with tournaments, there are actually, it's not just one field there. There's three fields there. So you have one at Mountain Ridge, two at Heritage Park. But tournaments, actually, they do like to have several fields there, but they also will schedule wherever fields they get. So our MSB, they'll schedule wherever. If you have an extra field, they'll grab it as well. So just a turn, depends on the tournament. And I mean, if it's the city that's running it, like Riverton sometimes will run a tournament, then yes, they're going to want at least four to six fields. Same with Lee High City kind of thing. But if it's, if it's an actual league, like an RMSB, QPG, then a single field is fine for their use. One other thing, just a big thank you to American Fork City also. So we met with their Parks Director and their field rental facilitator as well, and we were able to get a lot of information from them also.
I apologize, I had to step out. I had kind of a medical emergency, had to talk to a PA. But, and I appreciate, I want to echo, I appreciate the work, Councilwoman Rodella, that you've done on this. I really appreciate it a lot. One question I have, and it's kind of an ancillary question. Have we, as a council, decided that the staff will maintain that baseball field?
Yeah. So, so we talked with Josh. There are certain fields that, you know, you can have teams maintain and help maintain. But with the new baseball field, staff feels like they're the ones that need to maintain that because of turf and just making sure. But we have talked about running, so when you're running games in tournaments, whether it's staff that's going to prep the field or if it's a league that can prep it, and some, basically what cities do is they can do a training to show you how to prep it if you want to do that, or you just basically pay $50 to have the field prepped for a game by your staff.
That's understandable. Why wouldn't we consider outsourcing that to a professional company?
Outsourcing it to a professional company? I don't know, that's a good question.
Using some of their fees for this.
Yeah. I mean, either the fees can go to staff or-
Because this is going to lead into another discussion, because I'm not sure that our staff can maintain the baseball field appropriately.
The one at Mountain Ridge?
Yeah.
I think it was a, let's see how the year goes, and if it's not being maintained how it should be, then we'll have to outsource it.
Yeah, I just think we ought to have that discussion.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we have enough staff and different things to really maintain that, that well, and what's the number one priority? And we're going to talk about, a little bit about the city and how it looks, because I'm pretty concerned, so.
Yeah, I mean, with Mitchell Hollow, that's what we had to do. It wasn't maintained properly, and so we kind of did an exchange with Chad and then with a couple of other teams on there to say you get a certain number of hours and maintain it, and it's worked out well. I mean, you can do that with the new field. You just need to make sure that the person maintaining it understands how to do it. But I'll say, most of these travel teams, there is somebody on that team that is pretty knowledgeable about field maintenance. That's why in their coaching and in that area to begin with.
And just to clarify, I would have a similar concern about city staff maintaining the field. But to clarify, that the concern has nothing to do with skill or ability of the city staff. It's just the time and priorities and resources to get it, yeah.
And Josh can speak to this, but kind of haven't we thought about like hiring a very part-time person who is skilled in that, in that, to just do that, right? So they're not split between other, other needs, right, our other 300 acres or whatever we're trying to maintain overall? Who's, who knows how to do it properly, right, to Councilmember Scott, sorry, Smith and Rodella's points?
There is a section of the agreement that probably would be good to talk about now, then. It's the next point that we're entertaining the idea of allowing teams to provide in-kind services, such as field repair and maintenance, in lieu of paying to use the field. We felt like that would help teams that aren't charging an arm and a leg still be able to use the fields. If that's not a level of care that you're comfortable with, we can do away with that. But that is in there right now and it may go by the wayside if, if we do want to.
I really like that, because there are leagues that don't have a lot of money and they're not charging a lot to be part of that league.
I love it.
It'd be nice for them to have the access.
I know a lot of fields around there do that, but I think one of the aspects, just having boys doing baseball, one of the aspects of baseball is not just playing the game, but also maintaining where you play and teaching those boys that you need to respect the field. And so when they're maintaining it, they're not going to be digging their feet in the dirt, making holes in the outfield because they know what they had to do in order to fix that field and make it look nice.
Ownership. One question you had down as a question, I think, Jay, was are we seeing a lot of cancellations where someone books and cancels or doesn't show up? I mean, you know, that's, you know, that would be one concern, is do we need to have a cancellation if they are not showing up?
I don't know what the rate of cancellation is, but I did notice as I was researching policies, fees, you know, and other aspects of this, that other cities did. I did notice that some of them had not only a, you know, we provide refunds if it's done within five days. We provide a 100% refund, but that still does take staff time. And even just a nominal cancellation fee helps discourage those things, and so that's something to consider. We're not pushing it one way or the other, but just something to know that we don't do, that others, other cities are doing. So, yeah.
Are we, what is the plan on the field this year? Are we thinking of letting anyone reserve like in September, October? Or are we just going to kind of hold off this year?
I think we could be ready for fall ball, certainly. We're very, very close at this point, right? Just kind of a few finishing touches mainly on the batting cage area, but we're very close to be able to rent it out. And I know that a lot of teams travel during the summer, so summer's probably not going to be big, but maybe practices and then fall.
And the, you can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding of the reservation system is not everybody that uses Highland Family Park field needs to reserve it, but if you want to reserve it and have the field prepared for your game, you must reserve it. But if someone just wants to show up and, and use it to hit the ball around with their son and daughters, that, that is fine too. But if you want to have a guaranteed claim on the, on the field for that time, that's what this is for.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I was thinking that was what, we were doing that for our other parks, but for this one, we wanted to keep it locked up just because of the level of the field.
I thought the baseball field was locked up.
Okay.
That's a point of clarification I wanted to make.
Yeah, that one is locked.
I thought, that's almost like the agreement when the donor brought a donation, and I thought that was also one of their concerns. They didn't want to put a lot of money in the field and have it maybe be harmed.
This field is at a different level than all the other baseball fields, so we have to treat it that way.
So will then we be able to open it up for practices and teams to have like this summer or this fall, or? I just hate seeing it, like, looks like it's ready and then nobody can get on there.
It's so dang close. It's just weird. We're, you know, as we talked about, we're doing a few final touches basically to the batting cages.
Okay. But the field is ready, so we just need to work on the reservation then?
Uh, the mound, you were working on some stuff with the pitching mound too. Oh, power and access for the gate to try to make it easy, right, to get access in there.
Okay, what is it you're needing from us tonight? What is it you're looking for from us?
Just any more feedback from what you read in the packet, some items to consider. Mayor, you already brought up the cancellation fees. If that is something reasonable that you think we should do, we can add those in. Some other cities had a liability insurance requirement, at least for teams that were using it. It ranged from two to three million. So, you know, it's a possibility, but maybe we don't need to go there.
Rob, is that a concern if someone gets hurt, the liability for the city, or what would be the thought there?
It, it gives, we, I think we had some, there's some indemnification or, you know, you damaged the field, we can, you might have to pay for the cost to repair it. And then the insurance would give a backstop to, in case they can't pay that, we can go after the insurance. Acquiring that level of commercial liability insurance is a, I mean, that's, I remember talking with the Highland farmers market, and they had to pay like five or $600 to get a kind of a basic million-dollar insurance policy for a season. So that would, if we're looking to open up for smaller teams, that, that would be a not insignificant cost to them. It protects the city in some ways. It's just, is, is, you know, accessibility to the field worth the, you know, the risk?
So the benefit to the city is mitigating risk in the event of damage to the field rather than injury or anything along those lines?
It would also would cover injury more of, I'm not quite sure how they could injure someone, aside from, you know, swinging a bat at someone's head, but we wouldn't be liable for that anyway, so. I guess there's some way they could injure someone. I, there, I'm sure there's some case out there where someone's litigating that, but.
So, so Councilmember Rodella, as you've looked, you're more skilled in this, is it not, is it a common practice to require this liability insurance?
No, uh-uh. I think American Fork, like, they maybe require like a $200 deposit if you're doing a tournament or game. But liability insurance, no. If you're going down that route, then, you know, anyone who reserves anything within the city, you're going to need to require liability insurance, a soccer field or a pavilion or, I mean, where do you stop? Where do you draw up the line? So I wouldn't do that. Cancellation fees, I really don't think people really cancel. I wouldn't even mess with that. I like the team discount based on percentage of players. I mean, if we can keep this, give some advantage to Highland residents that say paid for it, then let's do that.
Your recommendation is no liability insurance, no cancellation, but yes on the team discount?
Yeah.
I don't know, if there's any other discussion different than that?
And we do have a $150 deposit is what we require, so.
Is that just for games or is that for practices also?
It's just for general field reservation.
I just, I don't see how doing a $150 deposit if you're going to reserve it for like a practice for two hours. I know American Fork just did it for games.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do it for practices, though.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. So I guess what we as staff need to know, you've read the policy. Kim has recommended moving the sign-up time from January to November. So if we do that and we add in the team discount based on the percentage of players who are Highland residents, is everything else fine? Or do you want other, other changes?
Do we want, is part of the rent, is batting cage as part of the rental, or are they just open game for anyone?
I think we're doing rental on those as well.
Say that again?
Yeah, we are renting those out.
Councilmember Rodella, would you include it if they're doing games, that they get the batting cages? But if you're doing a prac, like, I'm just thinking from a warm-up standpoint, right? Is that more of an expectation?
You know what? If you have a game and that batting cage happens to be open, you are in luck. But, and they'll go in and use it, but, I mean, a lot of times they'll go, basically they have a game and they'll go and reserve the batting cages an hour before the game.
Okay, so a different, I mean, so separately then, keep them separate?
I mean, especially if it's just like, I think we were saying $15 an hour or something for-
Any other input on this item? Do you have what you need there, Jay and Kim?
I believe so. We can bring a finalized version to a future meeting for you to approve.
Thank you. Well, now move on to our communication items. We have communication item number seven A, which is a traffic calming recommendation. I believe we have a road in the city called Canal Boulevard.
Yes, Canal Boulevard. Currently, it is designated as a 30 mile per hour roadway on our collector road speed limit map, which coincidentally does show 9,600 north at the 25 mile per hour. We talked about that a little bit earlier. Sorry. That way? I can't see it. Yeah, I'm trying to go back. There we go. We've got our, our table that I think the council is even in one form or another for many, many months now. I, I've kind of removed 11-800 and 11-200 from this and wanted to point out a few things. We've looked at the average speeds and where most of the average speeds are over the set speed limit. Some of them are substantially over, but we wanted to kind of compare Canal Boulevard also with the other two roads that are kind of that area of the city with 9,600 north and 10-400. One thing, a couple of things that I think really stick out is we look at the number of accidents that we've had along those roads. Definitely, we've had a lot of accidents on the east end of Canal Boulevard. But we've had also a lot of accidents on 10-400.
Does that include accidents before we put the median in?
It does.
So do we have data in terms of, because that significantly reduced accidents at that location. I'm more concerned about where the curve is.
I can follow up with that if you give me a minute and show you what we have.
I would like that because it, we know it's a high number, but those accidents that the median has, has literally eliminated, I think, pretty much eliminated. I would like that because it, we know it's a high number, but those accidents that the median has, has literally eliminated, I think pretty much eliminated.
We, we looked at accidents, yeah, between like 2023 and 2025 or 20, I might've gone back to 2021. I, I, and I had a graph that I had shown previously that I didn't include in this, but we did have a reduction in total number of accidents along the Canal Boulevard corridor in 2025. Or 2024.
So Chris, just so I can make sure I'm understanding, as I look at number of accidents per mile, if I look, is this from like 2021 till now? And you're seeing in a one mile stretch of that, there'd be 20 accidents in about a five-year period?
Correct.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure as I'm looking at this, so as I'm looking at this Canal Boulevard East, does that go out into the intersection?
That does include.
1100, uh, 11, the, can, North County?
Forty-eight hundred, forty-eight hundred, um.
Yeah, 4,800 west.
Yes.
Or 4,800, yeah.
Uh, North, North County Boulevard.
Uh, North County.
That intersection there, it does include that intersection and, and, you know, the bulk of the accidents that we have gotten have been at intersections.
Which intersection would pick up the Alpine Highway accidents?
I, I try to group those on, uh, the midsection.
Okay. So the midsection would have the Alpine Highway.
Frankly, I, yeah, that's where it's, it's kind of tough to call exactly. Uh, where do we want to include them in? And I think what, the way I kind of, uh, organized these is I included, um, Alpine Highway and 6,000 West kind of all in that mid, uh, Canal Boulevard section. We thought that it was, uh, appropriate to kind of, uh, discuss the, the, the density or the ratio of accidents that we have. And we wanted to compare that not only to the number of trips that we have, but we thought it also made sense to, to look at just over what length of roadway are we looking at? So we can just see how, how intense the occurrences of these accidents would be.
So can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So there's some correlation here about two things. One, the amount of vehicles that are on the road and two, how fast they're going. So obviously, um, on Canal Boulevard East, you have the highest density, I mean, the highest vehicle count. You also have the most number of accidents. Do you think the accidents is more secondary to the number of vehicles using it? Or is it secondary to the higher speed? Cause you got those two things going on there. So I, I think just kind of based on, on a comment made by Chief Williams earlier today, at least with some of the more recent accidents we have, they were not, uh, the result of excessive speeds. They were the result of failure to yield and, and driver error, I think probably is the way I define it. So it's not an error if they drive too fast?
Well, it, it's not a causation.
I mean, okay, just looking at this, it appears okay for every five, for every thousand cars on 10,400, we're getting five accidents. It's the same, we're getting 5.4 accidents on Canal Boulevard East for every thousand vehicle. You know, that's like going back to what you're saying. Scott, if you start breaking it down.
Yeah. Is it from the number of vehicles or the speed or both? It's probably a combination. So another quick question. We were over here curious how you have 11 and a half residential accesses. Where do you get a half of one? Is it a flat lot?
So that, that's a corner lot that has an access on both sides.
On both sides.
On Canal and it also has an access on, on the side street. Good question.
But that 11 on Madison includes, uh, north of 68. Right? On Madison Avenue.
North of 68? I'm not sure that I.
West of 68.
I mean, west, west of 68.
It does not include west of 68.
So you count 11, I only count six and a half.
I counted five and a half.
Yeah.
I, I counted these.
How do you get 11?
It's been a while since I, I put these numbers together.
I thought the answer was that you included that other.
I, I, I was trying to, to give as much leeway as I could, uh, when I, when I counted them, so. I, I'll have to go back and maybe recount it and see. We can.
I've double checked it a number of times and I, the most I get is six and a half. Sometimes I get five and a half.
Oh, I see.
But I never get 11.
I get five and a half. Now if you, just on that west side, but maybe.
Well, this, and this is between 6,000 and 68, so, okay. I'll, I'll have to go back and look again. Uh, one, one thing that I wanted to include just, you know, uh, because I found it interesting is I found some, some old, uh, traffic count data uh, that predates my time with the city. We have some traffic counts on Canal Boulevard, uh, going back to 2017 and 2019. Obviously I wasn't with the city. I, I can't really vet this. My, uh, assumption is that these, uh, were probably taken in the midsection between Alpine Highway and 6,000 West, since there was nothing east of the Alpine Highway at that time and just the short stub road to the west at that time. Uh, it's, I thought it was interesting to see that the traffic counts were around a thousand trips per day, uh, which is, is fairly close to the number of trips that we currently have on the west section of Canal Boulevard. I think we have 1,100 on that section. Um, and it's probably about 2,000, 2,700 now on the midsection. Uh, and you can see that the speeds that we had were, were in excess of 25, um, on both of those, uh, getting up to close to 35, it looks like, when we took, uh, a, a study in 2019. And, uh, we've also, also that was included on that is, is 9,600 north and 6,000 west. We've kind of been focusing on these east-west collectors, so I haven't actually provided any data recently to the council on 6,000 West, uh, for comparison. Uh, but I just thought that was, was kind of interesting. I know one of the concerns that a lot of residents have expressed is, residents from Cedar Hills using Canal Boulevard to get over to 6,800 West to get down to Costco, I'm sure it happens. Um, but as far as total number of traffic that we've seen, you know, it's still fairly comparable to what it was before that road ever went through, at least for that one section. Uh, this is the heat map that I kind of showed to the council before. This shows, uh, I brought it back with, with a legend on there. So you can see as it gets hotter, uh, more red and then to yellow finally, that is where we have the highest number of, of accidents. So you can see that they are very much, uh, weighted towards intersections that we have. A lot of the ones that we did show on 10,400 are at the intersection, uh, with Alpine Highway. Uh, then we have some on, on 6,000 and for some strange reason halfway down 10,400 to the west, it looks like there's been several more.
So, so I'm going to ask a question of the Chief Williams. Why is 6,400 West a heat, but yet thereby Freedom Elementary is not a heat? It doesn't look like, why is that intersection? I mean, that road doesn't really go through. Why are we seeing so much at 6,400? And I, cause I, I noticed that that start, is it because everyone thinks there's a stop sign coming the other way?
I think there's a perception that there's a four-way stop there. Cause there's not. We do have people that, that slow down and I think Chief had contested that, too, thinking that there is a four-way stop there. So people do slow down when they approach the intersection.
That's why I, I've seen. I think everyone kind of thinks, cause there's a four-way stop at 6,000 and then also there's not at 6,400. And so even some people I think there that aren't familiar, because they've used 6,000 West, they're thinking there's a four-way stop there. That, that helps us when we start looking at other stops. That's where if you put too many stop signs, it confuses individuals what we're doing. So. Okay.
We, we did, um, this map wasn't updated to some additional traffic accidents that Chief Williams, um, had, uh, contacted me out about earlier today. But, but I think all of those were on that east end, close to the intersection of, of North County Boulevard. And the comment that he had made when he sent is that they weren't really related to speed, that they were failure to yield, the failure to stop and following too close. It seems like a lot of them were probably following too close. Uh, maybe that goes back to some of the comments made by the council that there's so much speeding.
Trying to drive the speed limit.
Exactly. It's all. I, I don't know if you have any other thoughts or, or comments on causation?
I think you hit on it. The ones that we talked about this morning, I think we had four of them that were following too close. All of them were attributed to the, with the exception of two of the seven that we pulled since March 1st, all but two of them were attributed to the cross street, were attributed to, to, uh, North County Boulevard, to the Alpine Highway, to 6,000 West. They were not attributed to Canal Boulevard. There were two that were contributed to traffic on Canal Boulevard, but the other five since March were not.
So please explain that again. So what you're talking about, there's been, the accidents you've looked, looked at, they're coming down 6,000 West?
So I'll, I'll give you an example. We had three accidents at Canal, since March 1st on Canal Boulevard and the Alpine Highway. They occurred on the Alpine Highway at the intersection with Canal Boulevard. The, the vehicles just happened to have the collision there. It had nothing to do with traffic on Canal Boulevard. Does that make sense? So five of them were attributed to the cross street as opposed to Canal Boulevard. Two were contributed to Canal Boulevard, one on 6,000 West and Canal Boulevard. And the other one that was at, uh, in the, the center section there, I can't remember the name of the, the new street there, but we had an individual that was slowing for, an individual was crossing the street and the other individual didn't slow in time to, to make that stop and, and, and we had a small fender bender at that intersection.
Are we getting any confusion off of Canal Boulevard and 6,000 where some think Canal's more of a major road? And so they're, you know, they're, that they're supposed to be a four-way stop there. Is there confusion that way? Or because there's never been a stop there, it hasn't really been confusing there?
That, that's not been my perception, but I, I, that's not what I've heard, but.
Chris, I think we put those little flashing lights on all those stop signs there, right?
No, no.
How, how we have it light up when you come down the stop?
I, we're, we're missing some of those along Canal Boulevard. And I think that's something that we need to rectify. I think we need to put those, especially at 6,000 West.
How many accidents have we had on that curve on the east side of Canal, uh, where they've been speeding and spin out and go into people's yards? How often? I've heard numbers as high as eight or nine. What, what is the number there?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I think eight or nine is a very high number. I would put it at one, two, maybe three, but I don't know.
Was there one just a couple of weeks ago?
On, yeah, on Canal Boulevard and what section? On the east side?
On the east side, um, that went into somebody's yard?
No.
It's the central section that you're talking about.
That was, that was the one that happened on June, it happened on June 2nd.
I'm sorry.
I think that happened at the intersection.
Happened on June 2nd and it was at 6,000 West.
Yeah, it was right near the intersection.
Okay, I'm in the wrong section then. I'm sorry.
And there were some, there were some quite severe injuries in that and unfortunately we had a dog that perished in that accident.
Oh, wow.
So going, but as we look at the middle section, what some of the residents will talk about, there was some trees taken out in a couple of the houses. One was because of a, I believe there, there was a, a drunk driver that took out trees on one. And we had a younger driver, I think that took out the Roberts trees. But we keep hearing that there'd been a couple of times a house there, right next to where the Roberts used to live, had been hit a couple of times. You know which house I'm talking about?
I, not off the top of my head, I do not.
I'm just, so.
Is that the time you went in your pajamas?
That was my pajama. That was a wrong, so, okay. I, I, my wife is, I, and she goes, how are you dressed appropriately if I, if I go out? She, she always asks me that.
I'm glad you went.
What the house ran into was like, what, a block and a half west on the same side of the road? Is that right?
And this is on the west side on Canal. Is that correct?
So as we're looking, this is helpful to give us some accidents. Now you go, what, Council, what else do you need? This is kind of this, but coming back on the speed, uh, on the canal and things that way.
We need to know what the, what the plans are for mitigating this, for traffic calming.
Yeah. Let's, let's get to that then. Um, we, just to kind of reiterate a little bit, when we, when we try to come up with, uh, recommendations for traffic calming, we, we do like to look at the 85th percentile speed to see how severe those are or how high they are. When they're five to 10 over, we would generally look at a passive, uh, traffic calming measure. And once they get to be more than 10 miles over, we would look at a more of an active traffic calming solution. Uh, we, we had a consultant that we've been working with for a lot of these things. Uh, they went in and they ranked, uh, Canal Boulevard, uh, based on the traffic counts that we have, the traffic counts, the average speeds that we're getting and the 85th percentile speeds. And the total score that they got was 70 points for Canal Boulevard. Uh, we have three different types of urgencies that we've kind of identified in our traffic calming manual. Uh, we've got green for a lower urgency. We've got yellow for medium urgency and we've got the, the red urgency for high. Um, the, the breakdown on the points is yellow, uh, are between 40 and 79 points is what we would consider a yellow. And with this being 70, it, it falls in that and it, it leans itself mostly towards the, uh, more of a passive measures to enact along Canal Boulevard.
Well, the 70 is closer, going back to that chart.
70 is closer to the higher end.
It's just 10 points away from the red high urgency.
It's true.
So it's not in the middle. And when it's towards the, more towards the red high urgency end.
It's true, but it still falls within that yellow category. It just is within the high end of that. Some of the traffic calming implementations that we've done in other parts of the city, just as some background, we've got LED lights that, that the mayor mentioned earlier. This is actually the one that is, uh, by Madison on that one street where we had some residents complaining. And you can see that we put in the cross traffic does not stop sign as well. Uh, but we also have our rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon signs. Uh, we've had some streets that we've striped narrower, uh, to make that funnel it down a little bit and make it seem like, uh, you don't have quite that much room that Councilmember Campbell.
And all the neighbors in that area will tell you that it has worked. The traffic is going slower. It, it's amazing what those lines in a more narrow, uh, sense and feeling will give you versus wide open, just go. Um, it really, it really works.
And, and I put that picture up there specifically because I knew that you were pretty pleased with the outcome, so.
Well, my neighbors are pleased. I mean, that's, that's.
And I think that's, I, I mean, honestly, that's exactly what it's intended to do. So I'm great, I'm grateful that it worked.
So Chris, before.
The cheap calming method. I mean, it's something we should be able to do immediately when we get, we know where there's an area. We gotta figure out how to get to it and get it done.
One thing we were talking about on Canal was putting these stripes the other way. So when people are going, they'd see the stripes where it feels like they were going faster, but it never seemed to be implemented. That was something we talked as a council. Remember it was a, you start going, it was narrowing, but the stripes were off the side. So you felt like.
Let's let Chris get through recommendations if that's okay. You get, and, and I mean, you're, you're jumping to what we want to talk about, so.
You're still on my thunder, Mayor. Uh, this is a list of, of different passive and active measures that we have within our traffic calming handbook. I, I won't spend a whole lot of time going through there, but we, we have a whole list of, of recommendation solutions that we can try to help to implement. And I think it's, it's just really kind of important to, to note that any one item on this may not be sufficient. We really want to tackle this probably from a couple of different angles. Um, we also have some recommendations for pedestrian and bicycle, bicycle safety that, that we, we want to make some recommendations for. So here we get down to some of the recommendations that we have. Um, we, we did get recommendations from WCG when they did our evaluation, uh, of, of things that we should implement. Uh, on Canal Boulevard West, their recommendation was to install a landscape median, which would be considered an active measure, even though, uh, it falls within that passive category. The cost for that is probably at least a million dollars, uh, perhaps more. I think that seems, that, right now, that exceeds our $100,000 budget that we have for traffic calming within the city. So we've looked at some additional alternatives that we could look at implementing instead and some of the, the things we'd like to discuss.
Curiosity, what's the big cost on, on the island? I, is it excavation? Is it putting in the island? Is it landscaping?
I, I think it's everything.
Cause that's just.
Because that's.
Higher than I would have anticipated.
That, that's, that's what you would have to do. You'd have to remove asphalt. You'd have to place curb and gutter. You'd have to run some water connections, irrigation lines, top soil, all your, your landscape material and, and just, just everything that goes into the, the landscape medians.
And when we talk about a landscape median, um, at a million dollar price range, how long of a median are we talking about there? Or does it not matter a whole lot? That there, there's not a whole lot of difference between a 20-foot median and a 80-foot median?
Uh, you know, just enough so that, you know, again, what, what you're trying to do is create a road diet. Uh, you're trying to narrow the lanes. So I, I, I would think in this case it'd probably be somewhere in the 12 to 20 feet wide. It wouldn't be 80 feet wide. Oh.
I think it means length.
I, my assumption was that they were talking about the entire length of that western section. So nearly from, um, at least the Madison area down to 6,000 West. We would like to suggest looking at a rapid flashing beacon at the Mitchell Hollow Trail. Part of that is that it could be funded as part of the trail project and it does make sense because if we're going to put in a trail there, that would provide some additional pedestrian safety at that point. We already have the, the bulb outs at that location right now. And so that also is, uh, one of the past, one of the more active measures actually that we would have for road traffic calming. Uh, we would like to suggest, uh, painting some buffered bike lanes. We've done some striping along there. We've got the wider shoulders, but I think if we added a second line with the, with the kind of diagonal lines between it, it would do just a little bit more to also get that feeling of narrowing the, the traffic lanes that, and it, if you look at Alpine Highway. the the traffic lanes that and if you look at Alpine Highway and the the bike lanes that we have, they're the buffered bike lanes. That's kind of what what the thought is.
And 1120 in American Fork, it's 25 miles an hour and it's a collector. And it works because of the buffered bike lanes and the sense and feel that when you're driving that, you really don't want to drive any faster than 25, 30, 30 at the most. So I think the buffered bike lanes, I really like that idea. It's proven itself as far as I'm concerned from 1120 in American Fork.
And this is not an argument against the buffer bike lanes. I'm just trying to understand that. Do we technically have a bike lane there? And if not, if we put in the buffering, does that create a legal bike lane and so we can't allow parking anywhere along that stretch? Or do we already not allow it because it is currently technically a bike lane?
So I I think, I mean, it's a good question. I think generally speaking, you can have a bike lane and still allow side street parking. The bikes would just go around. I I do, from what I recall, driving on Canal Boulevard earlier today, we do have the the bicyclists painted, I think, westbound near the in in the midsection. So I think I I think we'd already call that, consider that to be a bike lane, just not necessarily a buffered bike lane. Canal Boulevard mid and kind of crossing over to the east, one of the recommendations that had been made by WCG is to do the optical speed bars. Those are the bars that come out perpendicular to the the shoulder striping. And the only reason why that hadn't been done yet is because our streets crew couldn't find somebody to do that, a contractor. So they actually had bought the paint and they were getting ready to to do that striping. And I told them to hold off. Let's have the discussion with the city council. But I think the the recommendation is that we go ahead and we complete that. We just are are going to have to paint that ourselves in-house with a stencil.
I'm sorry, to go back to the bike lanes for just a minute.
Yeah.
I thought that HB 290 prohibited parking in bike lanes. It was just passed this year. There's a difference between a bike lane and a bike path or something.
I was remembering the same thing, Councilmember Courtney, that there was some legislation that changed that. So I think we'll have to look into that before we bring this back for action.
Riding a bike on SR 92, that is a bike lane on both sides and there's cars parked on both sides.
I'm not convinced there is a bike lane on SR 92. It does not look, it does not look like it is a bike lane to me.
Okay.
I wouldn't write my bike line there.
And again, I I'm not arguing against the the buffered bike lanes. I I just want to really understand what it is that.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point of discussion. We'll we'll look at that and we'll see. There's there's obviously other ways to make bike lanes. I I think my goal was not necessarily to create bike lanes as much as it was to to create a more of a feel for a narrower drive lane. But I I.
And it also sets up more of a residential feel.
Yeah, having bike lanes. And and with it, you know, being a collector road and in this in the midsection, particularly not having any driveways, I would not expect to see as many vehicles parked along the side of the road, except for when our parks maintenance crews might be doing some some work or something like that. Going back to the recommendations that we had, it was a little bit interesting that for the midsection, they included bulbouts at the Windsor Meadows Trail Crossing, which I think makes a lot of sense, especially it would be something similar to what we have at Mitchell Hollow. They also recommended bulbouts at 6180 West. And I find that interesting because when I look at the map, 6180 West is actually west of 6000 West, so it should be on the west section and not necessarily the midsection. I think it would be great if we had another really ideal location for some bulbouts, but there's no other four-way intersections in that section. We could always consider maybe doing a choker, which is not so much a bulbout where we have it on both sides, but a chokeout would be on one side of the road. So we we might want to consider that. But but we also thought we could include the buffered bike lanes, depending on what the outcome is. Our thought was with the buffered bike lanes is we don't necessarily want to direct bike traffic onto 6800 West or the Alpine Highway, although that does have bike lanes. But because of the striping that we've done, it narrows up as we get closer to that east end of the midsection. So the thought was that we could just stripe that buffered bike lane between the the Windsor Meadow Trail Crossing and the Mitchell Hollow Trail Crossing. And that way, we've kind of provided connections to those two trails. On Canal Boulevard East, the recommendations that had been given were to narrower lanes, which we've already done that striping, to install the two-way left turn lanes to 12 feet wide at the intersections, which has been completed. We are recommending an additional rapid flashing beacon at Featherstone. I had some conversations with our street superintendent recently talking about this, and he said that that was something that had been discussed with him and the previous city engineer, and they kind of went back and forth on. You know, high level, I would say, let's see if we can't like funnel our pedestrian traffic to one crossing. But I think those are so far apart and there's so much different uses. I think that would be really difficult to do in this case, so.
Well, and and the north side of that is just, it's building out now. You're going to have, what, 450 homes up on that side? I just think you need more than one access out of there.
I I would agree. I did not have this in the presentation until you made your comments earlier, and then we added them just so that looked like we were responsive.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's not like I haven't said it a few times.
Yes, yes. And and we we feel it's appropriate to also add some additional radar feedback signs in that location on the east end as well. To to kind of go back, this this was the idea that we had for the buffered bike lane with the the two different white stripes with the kind of diagonal stripe in between. And those are just a visualization of the optical speed bars that were recommended. This is the striping plan that was provided by our consultants. And you can see, I I one thing I wanted to point out is if we look up here, it shows the the lane width at 11 feet. That's what it should be striped at. I have not gone out with a tape measure to verify that, but typically, a a drive lane would be about 12 feet. So so they did narrow it up. And then also, I just wanted to point out just how we have those, the optical speed bars on there.
So kind of, and I know this is where SW 12 is at, that you have there. We we go across the road, and I know it goes over to the Murdoch Canal, but there is no sidewalk going down. And anyone that walks along that area is a very unsafe area along that road. And and it appears when you do, we probably need to look at plans to come in and try to put something along down in here. What I'm talking about is down this way, some type of sidewalk.
On that side.
Because we, there is no way. I mean, we have a trail that comes across here. And I understand they get to the Murdoch, but they can't go the other way. And I think that puts some safety for, because pedestrians are walking in the road.
From that point west until the fence ends, which is what half again as far as the image shows, that the couple of times I've been out watching, we do get a fair amount of pedestrian access on the roadway, it looks like.
I'm surprised we didn't require it when the road went in.
I I think that's a fair point, and I'd love to see sidewalk on all of our collector roads at some point. This is kind of a continuation of the same sheet, just as we go towards the the east side. So we still have these optical speed bumps or speed bars as we as we cross this Alpine Highway. This, again, is just the the existing bulbout that we have at Mitchell Hollow Trail where we would we would suggest to include a rectangular rapid flashing beacon sign. So one of the one of.
Just one quick question about the flashing beacon sign. My recollection, and it may be wrong, is that coming westbound, you can't really see the bulbout until you're reasonably close to it. Is there a recommendation for how much distance you need for the flashing beacon?
Probably. I I couldn't tell you where it is off the top of my head, but I do know that when when we've installed those in the past, we've always had a a stop ahead or a pedestrian crossing ahead sign that had.
The advance notice.
Yeah, that provides notice.
There is, you're right. It kind of comes off a little hill.
Yeah, I couldn't exactly remember why you couldn't see it. And 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 in fairness, you know, when we do look at that that west end, you know, when I I mentioned that we've got 74 feet of right of way, that is where the right of way has been dedicated. And right there, immediately east of that trail crossing, there's right of way on the south side that hasn't been dedicated. So the right of way does definitely narrow up on that section of the road. One of the thoughts that I had had as a possible solution on that west end particularly is is a traffic circle. This is something that is part of our our traffic calming manual. This is a temporary traffic circle. It's not like a full roundabout, but the whole thought is that just having to change the direction that you're driving does make drivers slow down or end up driving over it. The thought was that we could consider putting these in at 68, 6180 West and also at 6630 West. We have at the 6630 West because of concerns that we've had from residents. We we've installed the LED stop sign there, and we also installed the sign that says cross traffic does not stop. So we we would have to pull out the the yield, we'd have to pull out the stop sign in favor of a yield at at that location if we had to. But I I think that's an option. Price these out and looking at the price that we have for the rubber material that we got, we could probably do these for about $10,000 at each intersection. So I kind of tried to put together.
When you say that those are temporary, is it temporary like the temporary speed tables that we had that we could not leave in place?
I think.
Or is it simply, I mean, it's obviously less temporary than putting in a full concrete?
I I I think we could leave these in for a longer period of time.
Snowplows get past them.
Snowplows would go around them. I I think if you looked at, you know, the picture, we've got the signs there so that they would know that they were there and they would just drive around like anyone else. They wouldn't have the same problem, you know? I mean, one of the the issues, you know, with the snowplows is they're so weighted down that when you go over even the smallest bump, it really can damage their suspension and and really makes it. So the the intent is that we wouldn't necessarily have to remove these. We could always look at trying to fund a more permanent solution as well.
Yeah, no, I was just curious if temporary meant we can't have them there over the winter?
I to be to be completely honest with you, I called it temporary traffic circles because that's kind of how it refers to it in our traffic calming manual. But there's there's no reason why you couldn't go with a more permanent one. We might want to put them in, see how it does, see if it's something that really does have an effect on reducing speeds and then.
Let me add, and this is, I didn't think we were having the speed issue as much in this area. So why were the issue we're putting them in? I mean, I'm just, I understand we have residents that like to have them, but our data is not showing that we put them in. So why, I mean, I'm just, as a council, we have to, I appreciate that there's people that go, hey, have speed. I have a damn lot of traffic by my house. I'd like to have them at the 6400 West and 10400 where we have accidents. We're not showing accidents here and we're not showing we need them. I'm just going, I appreciate that everyone wants to have it, but let's put them where they're needed. I'm just, that's being very blunt.
That's a fair point.
I mean, I guess that's the purpose of the whole traffic calming procedure that we had, is there is a high priority projects and and the data shows that that's what we need to do and adhere to.
But that's what, that's why the concern is going, I appreciate that we're trying to come up with it, but what's the reason for it?
Well, one of the things, we put the speed tables in, we took them out with a promise that we have not delivered on. And at some point, and I know there's actually a lot of backwork that's been done that that most people are not aware of. But and you couldn't get it done because you couldn't get the people to to put it in. And now it looks like you're going to put it in yourself. So I understand that part of it, but we leave here tonight, we want to leave with some traffic calming plans that we all agree to and we move on from Canal Boulevard because Canal's not our only problem.
Right.
We gotta solve Canal because we promised that we would.
So this, my concern is, okay, here's my question. Chris, the midsection of Canal, where it's so wide, to me invites speed. And that's what I've, anytime I'm there, I feel more comfortable. If by putting in those little, I mean, you're going to put a bike thing in and by putting that, is that really going to get take care of the issue? Or are we just putting a Band-Aid on the the real problem? Does that make sense? Is the real problem, we need to put and try to put mediums in there? Is a real problem, you know, Lehigh is putting up, and I kind of showed you those little flag barriers off the side because I'm going, it makes it feel more narrow than just the striping. I'm just going, I understand what you're saying. Are we really resolving the issue or are we just putting another Band-Aid on and and just painting something?
Well, and I understand your concern, Mayor, but sometimes because of the amount we money we have, we have to start out with some Band-Aids before we do major surgery. And and I guess my question, I I really appreciate all the work. We've done the toolbox. We've been, we've been talking about these issues for a couple of years. What I would like to see, and I agree with Ron on this, is I think we need to prioritize and come up with some areas that we're going to do. And maybe we're going to have to look at some cheaper things before we can put in the mediums. Because I I agree with the mayor, we want something permanent that's going to make a difference. But maybe short term, we might have to do something like striping and all these other things. But I I think we need to do something. And because we we keep talking about it and stuff, now we've got plans, some ideas, and you're new in the city, Chris, but maybe I'd like to see a prioritization of things and the people that complained about the toolbox and just say, hey, we're going to do these things and let people know it and see what we can do, right? That's kind of what I think Ron's saying.
Well, I understand. We want to go try, see if it takes care of it. I just, I'm hoping it does.
Well, I hope so too. And I agree 100% with what you're saying, but maybe a few Band-Aids would be better than nothing. That and the fact that we don't have a million dollars.
No, and I understand. No, and that's something you can start looking, I mean, I'm just talking about, we've talked about the sidewalk here forever. It's a safety issue when you have people walking on the road there. You know, this road's wider. I don't know why they designed it so wide. That's why sometimes that middle section seems to be, you know, a a concern, you know, coming down. You know, I've always gone, well, should Canal have the priority and not stop at the stop sign and 60 and 6000 West stop? You know, which, because what we've done is we've stopped Canal, but we're not stopping 6000. I think, Scott, you're right. Let's go and try to put in those, the little.
There's some little things we can do.
Put them in, see if it kind of calms it down if we put in the the stuff. But if not, we need to then come back and say, okay, we're stopping.
And we need to do a major thing, and we can budget for it.
Well, and that's where you go for grants. You know, if you're looking, okay, is there something where some traffic safety, you can get after some grants?
What do you need from us tonight?
I I do want to maybe back up and answer the mayor's question, though. I think the reason why I was looking at traffic circles in in this area on the west side is goes right back to just the number of driveways we had. It just seems like it is a little bit more of a residential area than what we have on the other sections of of Canal Boulevard. But it was an idea and and we're here tonight to try to get some feedback from the council. So I did put together some some costs, I think. Did you have a question, Councilmember?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Just so that the council understood kind of where we would be sitting. Pricewise, we had some additional additional money in the fiscal budget that ended yesterday. So we had pre-ordered some additional rapid flashing beacons signs. So we've got a few of those on order paid for. So that would be zero cost. The optical speed bars, we've already bought the paint for that. That's something we can get right on with no with no impact to this current fiscal year's budget. The radar speed limit signs, we're looking at another $6,000 to put those in on the on the east end there. We think to paint the buffered bike lanes, we'd probably get that for for less than 5,000. So again, when you talk about less expensive Band-Aids to start the process, those can be done for for fairly inexpensively. The temporary traffic circle, you know, for the two of them, it does get up closer to 20,000 and do some bulbouts. That's even more. So that goes up to about 30,000. I mean, just everything that we have on the list right now would be about $61,000. We do have $100,000 in this year's budget for traffic calming. So we definitely wanted to make sure that there were still funds left over to do other roads that we know we have issues in as well, so.
Could we do a bulbouts? Those bulbouts, because that's a chunk of money there. It's one-third of our budget for those two. Could they be done with paint?
They could be done with paint. We could also look at.
It's a start anyway.
It would be a start.
Because there are other areas we've got to look at. Canal's not the only area, but Canal is the highest priority right now, at least for me.
I would, sorry, go ahead, Darren.
No, please, Councilmember Courtney.
Two things. One, I hope that we can stop calling striping and painted buffered bike lanes as Band-Aids because that makes them sound trivial and insufficient and temporary. And I think that those are very real traffic calming approaches. They are the cheapest, easiest, and fastest to put in, absolutely. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they're less effective or less permanent in terms of our use of them. of our use of them than anything else that we may put in. Second of all, I would really hope that our approach to traffic calming is just exactly what has been done here, that we've identified several things that would be appropriate and to identify the one or two or maybe three that we're going to start with, put them in and see what happens. And the reason for that is, first of all, we can get something in faster. Second of all, we don't run the risk of overspending and over-solving the problem. And third of all, it allows us to get some real data that we can use when we're making decisions elsewhere in the city later. If we put a dozen different things in all at once, we have no idea what effect each one of them had. I would prefer to see that we do perhaps the striping to narrow the lanes, followed by maybe at the same time with buffered bike lanes if we decide that's an appropriate thing, perhaps followed a little bit down the road with the optical bars so that we can get a feel of what effect each one of them has, and then maybe we've solved the problem. And we don't need to go in and put in more intrusive, more active and more expensive things, but if we discovered that we haven't solved the problem, we've already got these things identified as, okay, great, these are the next things we're going to try. I think it would be a mistake if we tried to solve the problem the first time we did something, because I think it is, as you pointed out, I think it is going to take multiple things. I think we're looking to improve the situation and if that is enough of an improvement that solves it, score. But probably that we'll be coming back with an additional thing that we do and schedule it in. Maybe it's let that sit for two months, maybe that's it for three months and then bring it back to talk about what the data we have is and is that sufficient or do we need to make some additional improvements?
And I agree with that, and I'd like just to make a comment to our city administrator, but it'd be nice if we start implementing some of these things, even if they're minor things at first, and then have a report back what the experience is. Does it make a difference? And let's hear from the neighbors and the citizens as well. But I think it's time to do something. I mean, we've been talking about it a long time. I think we need to do some things this summer.
So, Scott, with you mentioned that, are there things here on the list that you'd say, hey, let's, let's start right now and get these done? You know, or, now, I understand these are communication, but some of the things like optical speed bars, we've already purchased. It sounds like the stats already purchased rapid flashing beacons. I mean, you know-
I'd like the radar speed limit signs. On the east side of Canal Boulevard, that would be a great help, because you actually have some on the other parts of Canal, but I think that'd make a big difference, especially if we agree to raise the speed limit a little bit on that side, but it needs to be enforced because if people start going 40, 45, I think it's going to be a problem.
Well, but I agree that it seemed like it did help when we had the temporary, the trailer out there too, so I definitely would agree.
People actually would slow down, but now it's like the faster we go, the better.
I really understand what Doug, you're saying. My heartache is our history. We've got an opportunity now to do a number of things here that we can jump on and get them done and move on, or we can say what we've been saying is let's study it more, let's do a little bit. That's my heartache. It's that we were going to do this in April, we couldn't do it during the winter, so that I understand. I mean, we took the, the speed bumps off, we couldn't during winter do all, any of this actually, but we could certainly do those first four things right now.
Right.
And then maybe the traffic circles and the bulbouts or something we can address later, but I would at least like to do the first four items we have on here. It's a total of $11,000, two of them don't even cost anything, and we move on to other areas.
No, I agree. I think, Ron, you're right. I think the one question is, do we want to add one, and maybe it's something, the bulbout there where it comes out of the trail there on the, in the middle section, because I'm going, that was the only thing, you want to put one bulbout so it does automatically? I just wasn't sure, you know, if I was going to do it, I'd do the top four and I'd probably suggest one bulbout to see if we can try to, it's a natural calming measure where we seem to have a little more speed.
Exactly. I like that.
Let me ask about the elephant in the room. What happened to the speed tables that we spent tens of thousands of dollars on and why haven't we found a place in the city to use them if we're not going to use them on Canal Boulevard? I mean, are they in storage? Did we sell them back?
We have them in storage. There was some damage to, that they occurred to them when we removed them, even though we were told not, so we've been trying to get them replaced through the warranty of the company. Last I heard, I don't, I don't believe that they've, they've replaced those. I'll follow up and see, but I do believe that that's where they're at right now, they're in storage.
But there, but there was a, some, it sounds like they got damaged, but they're underneath warranty.
Yeah, they should be.
I mean, what's unfortunate, just to be transparent, we spent that 20 or 30,000 on those speed tables.
No, like 75,000. You spend a lot of money on them.
I think it was 30. Anyway, but the concern is, is we could have put some other things in. I think the question is, so council, is that, are you kind of thinking the same thing that's, is put through the first four? Are you wanting to try to put a bulbout in or do you want to do the first four and then wait to see before you do something?
I like that, 100%.
That would be my preference and just to clarify, Ron, I don't believe anybody is saying that we should just keep studying the issue.
No, you know me well enough to know I overstate my, I do, because I feel passionate about it, you know, and so forgive me, I don't mean that in any derogatory way, but we have had a history on Canal that we've not followed up. Now, we can have a long list of reasons why and they're certainly legitimate, but we still, and you've said it before, Doug, that we owe this to this community, so I'm glad we're doing this tonight.
And Mayor, this doesn't have to come back, right? We can just give direction and it can just be done because it's part of the traffic calming study and the whole plan.
Let's do it.
So, that's a question for Rob. Do we, I mean, it's in our budget, we approved the budget, it's underneath probably, if you look at some of the budgetary aspects of what our city ministry, is the city ministry, is it the dollar amount, 25,000?
Yes, so that's within my purview to be able to do, so.
Why do you think, Rob, does it need to come back?
If all we're doing is the first four, and I didn't hear if it was one bulbout or no bulbouts, but even then, altogether, that project is still under Aaron's, I think, if I can, it's kind of close.
Ooh, you're cutting me close if you're adding a bulbout. I'm sorry, I was, that was one clarification. Are we doing a bulbout or are we doing a temporary bulbout or not, a painted?
We are doing in July the first four and the first of August and a different person sort of doing the bulbout.
If we are effectively giving direction and making decisions this evening, then given that these specific recommendations nobody has ever seen or heard before, I know that we have at least one resident here from the neighborhood, I would really, I understand that it is getting late, but before we make a decision on yes or no on these, I would really like to give them an opportunity to speak again if they would like.
Council, would you like to take some time to hear a little bit about, we do have residents that stayed?
I think it'd be great, I think we need to limit it because we've got other things to talk about.
If there's maybe one or two that'd like to come up and share what they've heard us talk about, we'll give, I think those two right there stood, right there. Keep your comments brief, please.
So, if you're talking about-
I know it's St. Barbara Land, but just-
Barb Land, sorry. Sorry. First of all, the statistics on mid Canal are not correct. We do have one driveway that goes out onto mid Canal. We have had eight accidents that have gone into yards. I can give you the names of the neighbors that have had the cars in their yards. We have cars park along that trail street all the time. I don't know why anyone say cars don't park there. Come look, they're up and down the street, especially by my house where the trail goes across that trail, needs a bulbout. If you're going to start with any one item, while I'd love to see you paint and whatever, I think you need absolutely a bulbout on that street. And I do think there needs to be other things on that street, but hey, we'll take whatever we can get. And yeah, just come stand in my yard on, on any given day and I'll point it all out to you. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, is that the bulbout you're referring to?
Yeah, that was a bulbout there in the midsection.
I wholeheartedly agree.
And I want to caveat, my price on that was more for an intersection bulbout than a trail crossing bulbout, so I bet we could get that substantially less than that $30,000 that I have.
And just on that bulbout for a moment, the only reason that that would not be a top priority for me is that I would actually prefer to see a Z intersection there and put a median, a Z crossing instead of a-
In the meantime.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
John Redmond, we've talked before.
Did you get that, John Redmond?
Okay. I'm busy with every one of you. Number one, nobody has ever mentioned noise again. I want to remember, what you remember, that's part of a neighborhood. This is supposed to be a neighborhood city and the noise is an issue. I guarantee you that you break the city code every day on every road in the city. Now, we can't drive it down to where it should be according to your code, but we can certainly reduce it and reducing speed reduces noise. The 85% rule is just antiquated middle school. I'll just say, it does not apply to residential areas, okay? Number three, road width, I think, is artificial. If you go down to that 700 North, East and West and American Fork, the road is massive, but they have those huge striped areas between the lanes. You know exactly where the lanes are, you know where the keep out areas are and you know where the bike lanes are, and they enforce it, okay? Enforcement, I think, is very minimal in our city. Everybody drives, there is a speed epidemic in Highland. I set my cruise control at the speed limit on Center and West Canal, I'll set it 25 just to see. I have been passed on the left, passed on the right, I've been passed in crossing areas in bike lanes, it doesn't matter. People don't stop at the stop signs, they do rolling stops. That accident we were talking about, six cells in an Alpine, it was about 10 o'clock at night, couple of weeks ago, I was over there, saw it after the fact, presumably two kids, two teenagers were driving, I don't remember if they were going east or west. They either didn't see the car or ran the sign and there was a lady coming down at an excessive speed, the speed limit on 6,000 is 35 miles an hour, I've been passed on 6,000 driving the speed limit, left and right, okay? She was going excessive rate of speed and T-boned him and blew him across the road and pinned him against a tree in the yard, that's what you're talking about. They had to pull him out through the front window. Luckily, they all walked away, but the girl's complaining of a sprained neck, which I'm afraid is going to bother her for a long time. It's only a matter of time before we kill somebody in the city. It's just epidemic, okay? So, I appreciate everybody's efforts. I know this is a difficult issue. We did the traffic calming exercise for over two years. It's been over nine months since I think we filed the first official speed mitigation for the west section of Canal and it's been nine months. And I think they put two stripes at 6130 for a crosswalk, but they're not even hashed, so you don't even see them. In fact, I was passed and that circle-
Can I finish that, please?
So, anyway, I think we need to get moving.
Mayor, video evidence showed that the individual was doing between 35 and 37 miles an hour on 6,000 West when that accident-
Say that one more time.
So, video evidence showed investigative tools showed that the individual driving south on 6,000 West was in the accident, was between 35 and 37 miles an hour.
And the, and the speed limit there was?
35.
That's also first to kind of, okay, let's bring it back, you know, you've got some comments, council, I think we hear frustration from the residents saying we've been talking, talking, let's do something, maybe, you know, it was what we're talking here, is that what we'd like to do for you?
Right. I think the direction is, is do it.
Do it. Okay, now, let's talk about what we're doing. Can we just, can that go back, please? Going the wrong way. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
So, I just want to make sure we know the staff, we're doing the rapid flash beacons. Now, you have four of them, are all four of those for Canal Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay. The optical speed bars we know are going in because you already have it. The radar speed limit signs, the two are for Canal Boulevard?
Correct.
Each section.
And then, and then the buffer bike lanes. Now, council, there's been a comment about the bulbout there by the trail that comes out to go to Murdoch Trail. Are we wanting to also put one bulbout in?
Yes.
The bulbout at the, or at the trail crossing, not the intersection, okay.
Trail crossing. Now, Doug, you talked about trying to move it to the intersection and have it as a Z. Is there-
Not moving it to the intersection, but right there at the crosswalk that we already have, crossing the road. What we're, the crosswalk that we're talking about is the far east, well, not far, but the eastern portion of the middle section of Canal, right, right there where there's the wild grassy area on the north, yes, right there, yep, okay, yep.
You got it. Put it on the screen, show, put, use your-
My personal preference would be to put a Z crosswalk in there. That would also limit the size of the lanes because of the median that you're putting in for the Z crosswalk. And I very much like the idea of forcing drivers and pedestrians to look at each other.
I'm circling right there blue, is that where it goes or?
Yep. But-
You're such a-
But I do think that a bulbout is a significant improvement over what we currently have. It is probably cheaper than putting in a Z crosswalk. If folks want to go the route of a bulbout, I can support that. It's not my personal first choice, but-
And I get that, it's just at this point, I think we just need to move.
The reason why I'd recommend the bulbout, we need a Z crossing on 6,000 West where the Murdoch Trail crosses there, or we need it, I'm just saying, we're going to have some funding for that intersection that has a ton of people crossing that trail. We did not fund that, and I think we had some as the roads going in, but we're going to have to look at that one crossing as so many pedestrians going to cross it. So, what, does staff understand what we're, all those four plus the one bulbout?
One bulbout at the, in our trail, and we are going to move forward with that now. The original intention was to bring all of this back to you along with a change to the speed limit on East Canal for next time. So, but what I'm hearing is move forward with everything now. Are you still comfortable with us bringing back a speed limit change next time for East Canal with the, given that we are going to be moving forward with the traffic recommenda, or the calming recommendations we just outlined?
So, I'm going to vote for changing that speed limit on East Canal and two, those flashing lights are up and ready to go.
Exactly.
And we did order those in last fiscal year, but they're six to eight weeks out, so-
When they come and you get them up, you don't have to turn them on yet, then we change the speed limit because they'll go nuts on that road and we got to have that traffic calming ready to go.
The reason why I'd recommend we move ahead now, it's July. If we also, I'm just saying, also we're going to say, hey, it's weather. I'm just saying, we've got to kind of get going.
Sure.
Okay.
And my understanding of what we're saying is that staff should make decisions about what makes sense for traffic calming on that road. We are providing the information at this point, this evening, of what we as council members think is appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay, let's now move on to our next item, number 7B, which is e-bike ordinance update. That's going to be Chief Williams.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. I'll be quick, given the time. You heard one of the-
You heard one of the stories tonight of an incident that occurred here in Highland. We have multiple stories, not of this magnitude, but of individuals that are nearly getting hit by e-bikes or motor assisted scooters that we get almost, you know, several times a week. We have, since June 1st, well, the end of May, when school got out, we stepped up enforcement, we've issued citations, we put things out on social media, we've called parents at 2:00 in the morning to come pick up their kids and their bikes. We have sent kids walking home and leaving their bikes behind.
Wait, Chief, I just got to clarify again. This is different, so you got your Sarons, right?
Correct.
And then you have like your little Jetson e-bikes?
Correct.
Are we talking about the Jetsons or the Sarons?
We're talking about Sarons. They're the things that we have the most issues with. I've got several dash cam videos of officers trying to initiate traffic stops on these, on these Sarons and these e-bikes, these class three e-bikes we're talking about. And they just take off running. That's become the thing of the kids now. And we've tried to do education through social media, we've tried to do education through talking to kids on the side of the road, through parents, and we continue to have this, this, this problem, even down to five years old we're talking about that happened tonight, where we have underage individuals who don't know traffic laws and are inexperienced on, on the roadways riding them, where they're not allowed.
So was that five-year-old on a Saron or just an e-bike?
That's, that's up to the mayor.
I'm sorry, what was your?
Yeah, I, I have.
I think we'd like to understand what type of bike it was, yes. Just one of these little small motorcycles?
Because I know, I know these Sarons.
Yep. Now, here's a question, Rob.
I mean, I'm picturing these Sarons and it's like.
How are we going to get this on public?
Yeah, I'm going to need to have a copy of that picture.
You're going to now have to email us a copy.
Email the council, council@highlandut.gov.
Well, you can show it, just, but we're just need to, we're going to need to have it because now, because the public will want to know what we're talking about. No, it's not, that looks like a little.
That's a razor, yeah.
Well, you show it to the rest of the council, so they can see it, and then maybe.
At any, at any rate, it's a, it's a motor assisted scooter. Somebody that age should not be operating it on the sidewalk, in the parks, on trails or on the road. What we're, state law.
You need to send a picture so she can put the packet.
State law gives us enough teeth to continue to do this enforcement, but we need to, we're doing the best we can to get the education piece out there.
By enforcement, I'm sorry.
Say that again.
On the enforcement side, are the parents liable? Are the parents, allowing a five-year-old on that seems to be child defect.
Under, under the e-bike, the, under the e-bike rules, they need to be under the direct supervision or within, I don't, I don't remember how the law puts it, maybe, Rob, you can help me with that, but they need to be within, under voice control of a parent or legal guardian. And I don't remember exactly how.
But are there penalties, are there citations to the parents?
Yes.
So, Chief, what can we do to help you? I mean, let me ask you, if we did a facility where there's an area for the kids to build, to go ride them, where we could only encourage more to buy them so they have an area to ride? Or by giving them an area to ride, does it bring it, does that make sense? What is it we can do to try to help in this situation?
I, I don't think giving them an area, giving them an area to ride will give them an area to ride, but they will ride to get to the area to ride. So it's not going to fix the problem to do that. We just need to continue to do education and enforcement.
Can we, can we do anything with the, with the schools? Can we have them send out with their regular communication, can they send out?
That would be up to the schools individually to do that. We can certainly ask them through our contacts at the school to see if they would be willing to do that.
I mean, I guess we could put in the newsletters saying, these are illegal. If you happen to have one, they're, they're illegal to be on the roads.
I actually have something written that we can put in the news line if you want.
Say that again?
I said, I already have something written that we can put in the news.
But you did a big Facebook post on it.
We did, yeah, just a month ago, and we continue to try and do the, as much as enforcement as we can.
And I know that was a lot of help because, I mean, I, I had a lot of discussions with, you know, I have kids this age that ride e-bikes and, and a lot of friends and say, okay, so let's go through the classes and say, what, are we doing the right thing, wearing helmets? Or, you know, what can my 10-year-old ride, my 14-year-old ride? So it was really helpful, but it still was a little bit confusing as well, I'll be honest.
Could we? Do we need to look at our fines? I mean, I think if people are cited, they need to pay, maybe that'll be.
Well, I think we already have.
I know, but maybe we need to.
How much does it cost? If you cite someone, how much?
That I don't know. I don't know how much it costs when we issue citations for this. And I just chuckle because I remember a conversation about fines and fees several years ago, Councilman Smith that we were part of, that we lowered them, so.
Yeah, that was quite a few years ago, that was before the advent of Sarons.
Could we, would it make sense to design and print a poster to put on a, something right outside the library, maybe?
Yes, but I think it would make sense to have something like that outside the library, the city hall. But it has to have pictures of like.
I think you need, I understand your article, I think you have to have a picture so people understand what you're talking about and then what the regulations are. I guess the question is, is, Kim, what will parents do? They, the kids have them, what are they supposed to do with them?
Okay, I'm going to be honest with you. I'll, you know, I know that's hard to believe. The parents who have bought their kids Sarons already know they're illegal and they could care less. So what they're going to do is basically say, tell the kids, just run away, kind of thing like that.
This is saving the parents from driving them to their friend's house, to driving them to the store. This is the new commuter tool.
Where, how we've had the residents come in tonight, we've had residents, it appears almost now every council meeting come in here, we've got these issues, we've got these safety issues. I don't, what do we need, I mean, what are other communities doing? Are anyone being successful in anything?
You know, this is a, this is a pandemic, I'm going to call it that statewide. My counterparts, we speak of this every time we get together. And there's actually legislation that's in the works right now to help address the e-bikes through the Utah Chiefs of Police Association, so.
Maybe a little harpoon system that you have on the front of your.
I don't, I don't know, it would almost be like great to ask feedback from those parents that own Sarons and say, you know what, we have a problem and this is some of the things. So work with us, help us to make it safe for your kids. What are your suggestions? What are your solutions? Because this is what we have in place, so.
I, I think putting something in the news line, I think, I think designing a poster that we can stick on each one of the council members' cars for education. You guys can drive around the city, I don't, maybe an entrance into the parade and, 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 you know, stuff during the Highland Fling will be helpful also.
So if you guys want to like ride Sarons in the parade with the posters?
No, I don't, I, no, I don't.
That word says illegal, don't do, here we are.
But it would be good to get feedback from like parents and, and say, you know what, you guys know this is illegal, so what can we do and work together to, to fix this? I don't know.
Why do we just let people do things that are illegal? I'm confused by that. Like, if we know it's illegal, then why are we, like, why are we saying, how can we get around it?
They're not, they are doing, they are enforcing, that's what.
We're trying to educate.
They're attempting to.
Let's, let's increase the fines, I really think, because it's dangerous. We had them in my neighborhood Sunday, but.
So for the Sarons, is it only kids or adults? Can adults ride these things?
Our, the issues are between 11 and 14.
But adults are legally allowed to ride them?
We don't have issues with adults. Adults have cars.
I just know certain people buy Sarons for their elderly parents because they try and take their keys away, and so they'll buy them Sarons.
We haven't, we haven't run into that issue.
Okay, but so, so it's just for the, but it's illegal for everyone?
They are not legal on, on any, on any city-owned property, state property, parks, trails, they're not allowed.
Okay.
Would you guys like to hear, I know, I hate to say, it's like 10 seconds, it's something fast.
What the officer told me when we were there, because all the moms were sitting around, we had no idea that.
Speaking to the microphone.
They had no idea that they were even like not allowed on the sidewalk. Because one of the girls was like, why always tell them to stay on the sidewalk? Well, the officer said they're not even allowed on the sidewalk. So people are backing out and all of that. I had no idea, I, you know, we're mountain bikers, we love our bikes. So I'm like not anti-bikes at all, but safety, if legality, I think these parents need to know. And I'm, I would be educating, I'm totally an advocate. I'd be educating them, but I'm in like a bad spot with our neighborhood with this.
So, Chief, I think we can get like a colored brochure to put in the, in the newsletter that says that, so that shows the.
It's on our, it's on our Facebook page, but we'll work something up for the newsletter as well.
So like, I guess it needs to be clear, because I mean, I have kids that have the Jetson e-bikes, and they'll take it to their baseball practice or soccer practice or wherever, and I have them on the sidewalk. I mean, they can bike, it has pedals, wear helmets, not allowed on sidewalks then?
No, no, that's the difference between the class of e-bikes. So you have class one, two, and three.
But this one here, it was a little razor.
So that's a motor assisted scooters and those, there are.
Because it doesn't have pedals, right?
Correct. There are rules that surround that as well, but five years old is not allowed to.
I saw, you had to be eight. I mean, I went over that Facebook post. Because you know, I just got to make sure my kids aren't getting arrested by you. So I went over that Facebook post. The helmets, the scooter, I think there's these scooter, you got to be eight and above.
Yeah, eight years of age.
If we can get, help educate the residents, I think, so. Hey, Chief.
Mayor. I'm sorry, is there anything we can do to beef up the penalty for parents who allow a five-year-old to get on a razor? We need to look at our fines, yeah.
I think, I'll also say.
So criminal fines are set by the state. We actually can't increase them beyond what the state allows, so citations are set.
A class B misdemeanor by, based on child neglect?
I, I think, state code classifies.
Endangerment.
It's an infraction, I think, understood.
Yeah, it's an infraction, so fines are minimum. I think one thing that would help is if we ended by 9:00, that would really help.
If we ended here by 9?
Yes, that would really help us.
Okay. You mean am?
No, well, that's where we're headed, but you know, an hour ago would have been.
Scott, do you have something?
Well, yeah, the next item on the agenda.
Well, let's go on to our next item.
Because we're over the 10:00, but I really would like to say this, okay?
7C, watering and maintenance of city property.
Okay, so I'm going to talk really fast. So I was in Alpine six days ago, and I was at an event at Timberline. I drove by Burgess Park, gorgeous, watered, green, that was full of the citizens of Alpine. I drove down the streets of Alpine, beautiful, green. I drove into Highland, the Alpine Highway Parkway is burned up again in June, and our parks were burned up, nobody was using the park at Heritage. I go down to Art Di over the weekend, full of people, green, being used. So I'm going to be real blunt, because I'm usually an advocate for the staff as much as I can be, but our city looks awful, and we need to do something about it. I don't want to hear a bunch of excuses about pumps and meters and all that stuff. We need to do something. Because we're going to have the Highland Fling on the worst-looking corner in the city in one month. We're going to have all those citizens there, and I just think we need to find out what we can do. So we've been, Alpine Highway, we can talk about zero escaping and water shortages and all that stuff. But I think we need to take care of what we've got and keep the trees alive. The trees are dying around the community center, and it's because of the construction there, but it looks awful. And so I'm, I'm just being really frank, but we're getting a lot of people complaining to us about how the city looks. And we're supposed to be per capita of one of the wealthiest cities in Utah. And, and it looks like, it looks bad. And, and so that's my feeling, I don't care what you have to do, we've got to get it looking better. And I see that you're trying to water a little bit more and that, but the Alpine Highway looks terrible. And the Heritage Park, there's nobody using it because it's all burnt up. Your kids don't want to play on burnt ground. So I don't know what we need to do to do it, but I think we need to lock, talk about it and get something done. And, you know, one of the problems that happens is when we don't take care of our city, these, there's narratives that start developing among the public. And I heard this narrative, and I was shocked. But people said, why have we given all of our water to Lehigh? So when our city doesn't look good, then people assume that we've been giving our water away. So I know it's going to be a dry year this year, in a month or two we'll probably be rationing, but we've had two wet years and things didn't look much better. So I'm going to be real honest. So as a representative of the citizens, I'm just saying, I don't care what you have to do, we need to look better than we do, and it needs to look better for the fling.
Okay, do you really? Josh, you're here, I did hear of a unique idea today. If we want, we can paint some grass. And we used to do it in the years past. They used to buy a dye and they put it out and make the city grass look green. I'm just, Scott, if you want to pump it, you can talk all craziness you want, if you want something fast.
Well, it's got to look better for the fling.
Josh, and I know that you're taking a little bit of heat here. I, I will, I, as an elected official, it's been a little embarrassing, but I, I understand there's things going on. I mean, I recognize that we were hand-watering certain areas in our yard too. Would you mind coming up and helping us, I understand a little bit what's happened, because it, it does look a little different to me this year than other years. And I always respect, I've always felt like you've always had the good care of Highlands. This is, I'm going, I've always felt like you always have, and I'm not saying you don't, I'm just saying, help us understand. I understand Scott's going, hey, I don't want the excuse our water clogs around. I don't want an excuse that it's also dry, but we do need to hear what the real situation is.
What we can do.
And what, what our solution is to be able to get it green back up.
And how about getting the dead trees out of the median strips on the Alpine Highway?
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we are really trying really hard, okay? It's something I pride on, I live here, it's very important to me, okay? We are very, very conscious about water, okay? We have not broken our rule with water, we've been only watering three days a week. That being said, we've had probably the driest month or the driest June ever. I mean, when's the last time you remember any rain? When's the last time you remember 100 degrees in June? Okay, some of those things have come into play. Yes, those clocks need to be turned up. Do we turn up and use more water? Or do we keep that water and try to make it through the whole year? I mean, that's one thing we looked at, I mean.
So I have a question, Josh, I thought we were watering the city property during the day. I've heard we're watering at night, is that, I thought that we were taking.
I would love to water during the day, but do you know how much heat you're going to get? You can't use a park if we're watering it during the day. I mean, we have a few facilities that we're watering during the day because we don't really have an option. Spring Creek is one of those, Viewpoint is one of those, the soccer fields in Wild Rose. All of those, we have pressures that are beyond us to operate at night. I think we recorded pressure at Viewpoint last week at 36 pounds.
And why was it so low?
I can't tell you, but it was during the middle of the day. I mean, it, it's hard, there's only so much feet that have dropped, so there's only so much pressure. I think the best it ever gets is 50 pounds.
The Viewpoint, all of us, we're on culinary, we water, all the houses up there do culinary so they're not on our pressurized system. But we also had two, we had, we have three pumps up in that area, I want to call it the Lone Peak area, and two of them went down, my understanding was.
So the pumps being down was definitely from east of the Alpine Highway East, definitely played a big part of it. The other part is how the system got loaded in the spring, okay? Normally, all the water comes out of the canyon, fills the pipes, we're good to go. This year, there was not enough water to come out of the canyon because it had to be diverted because of the weird project. All of our water, most of the water that got loaded in the system came from the Murdoch Canal. This is a first for us, we've never done it this way. We have more filter problems right now than we've ever had at this time of year. And I'm assuming you've got phone calls from residents complaining about their filters as well. That's probably been our biggest part is the filters, and we haven't been able to keep up on them. Some of them are getting changed daily. And you're like, oh, they're watering daily. Yes, we're watering daily, but it's only a section that's getting watered. The facility itself is getting three days of water on each area, but some of our filters are killing us. And we've had it to the point, actually, some of the filters are burst. And then that stuff has went beyond the filter down the line.
I have a question, where Viewpoint is on culinary, does the filter get clogged the same way?
I don't know if I want to say anything on record.
I'll hit you up later. I had another.
I'm being completely honest with you.
You're good.
Not as bad, but yeah, I will talk to you off-record on that.
Okay. Another question that I had is, there were the problem with the pumps, and I know in Viewpoint there were problems with like the batteries, I guess. Is that something that you check in the spring before you turn the water on? Or is that something you can't really tell until?
So we've gone through about 200 9-volt batteries. Most of those 9-volt batteries are backups for either a clock or a battery operated. They all get changed in the spring. In your particular area, we changed them, and then they went dead in about four, five weeks. We changed them again and thought, well, we had some bad batteries, they got mixed up, whatnot, and then they went dead again. We changed them again and thought, well, we had some bad batteries, they got mixed up, whatnot, and then they went dead again. And then at that point, we changed that battery-operated controller, cause that battery-operated controller was using too much power.
Got it.
So most, all the batteries get changed in the spring through everything. We just start from scratch, no questions asked. So. I mean, we are right around two hundred nine-volt batteries reviewed so far.
That's crazy.
So. The other part, the other part, sorry to cut you off, Mayor, is, and I'll take the blame, but fertilizer didn't get applied when it should've. Um, I was afraid to order fertilizer. I thought we were gonna be in a new building in like May. I didn't wanna move twenty-four pallets of fertilizer from one building to the next building. So I was holding off, and I really was hopeful that we would make it. Um, and then I finally decided to pull the trigger and we just ordered it. We're almost through all of our fertilizer, but we're probably a month behind. So technically, the fertilizer, we are treating the, the grass, the Kentucky bluegrass, we're tricking it to not go dormant. Kentucky bluegrass wants to go dormant during the summer. It does not like heat. With fertilizer and water, you can trick it to keep growing, and it'll stay greener.
So, uh, why are you saying, so the, when we do our, our Parkway detail, where it looks so dry in some areas? You're saying you, because it turned hot so fast, we didn't, it was one, we didn't have fertilizer on. Two, it turned hot faster, and so maybe our clocks weren't timed for it when it turned hot, so we had to go adjust the timer?
Yeah, so some of those clocks have a monthly set on the seasonal adjusts. The seasonal adjust on your controller takes your regular time and then either plus or minus it. If this is a feature you're not using on your clock, I'd love to teach you. Um, but you're, it will automatically adjust the time. So in the spring, you should have it like at fifty percent. As the, as it gets warmer, it bumps up. Some clocks are automatically set monthly. It'll bump up to historical temperatures. And then it goes back down in the fall. And so some of those clocks have that feature. Some of those clocks have to be adjusted monthly on that. And some of those, it just took us a while to get to them. And we have a hundred-plus controllers.
So how about all the sprinkler heads along the Alpine Highway?
There's some maintenance work that needs to go there. They need to be raised so they can get better coverage. Um, the pressure definitely has played a part of that, but this, they need to be raised so we can get better coverage. So that's something we have on our agenda to do, start to work on and get those raised. I purchased those. I went for a roundabout number. I hope I'm close on them. I mean, I bought a hundred and eighty heads to start on there.
So you just, you're, you're not putting an extension on them, you're buying bigger heads?
We're, we're putting a bigger head. Um, I don't particularly like the Alpine Highway and the curvature of the eye, of the, the round, of the pieces of those. It's hard to keep water on there. It wants to roll off. And to get the coverage over those, I want the heads to pop up a little bit higher so we can get better coverage across those.
Are you fully staffed?
We're fully staffed. Um, well, we had someone quit this morning. We have a few quitting this week. So, I mean, we're, we're there, but we'll have to start the process over again. But I, I get the fully staff, but every, the two guys that are helping on sprinkler crew, they're being trained this year. It's their first year. Um, if we could get repeat guys like that, that wanna do that, it would be helpful for us, but not always do we get the repeat guy that knows the ins and the outs. We're hopeful that they can just understand the streets and where the streets are. Um, I don't know what it is, but our addresses are super hard for guys to understand. So if they're from Highland, that's one of the first benefit. They might understand our, our addresses a little better.
Dude, I get that. I got two pizzas delivered while I was here, like to the wrong address. They're hard to find.
Well, we appreciate your work, but you know, at the same time, our neighboring cities seem to be able to handle it. And I'd just like to see some improvement, cause it's hard to explain to people when they complain, well, we can't use the park cause it's dead. You know, and, and I think, you know, our new park, our jam, a lot of times it really needs to be weeded out in the zero scape part. So if we're gonna zero scape, we gotta keep the weeds out of the zero scapeing.
Yeah, and I'm not sure.
And the definition of zero scapeing is not to let everything die. And, uh, you know, and I, I know it's a hard thing, and I know we're, I mean, in two, two weeks, we're gonna have the dedication of a building on the USDC. And there's this big debate on the governing board of how much the grass we can let die, because the governor doesn't want any of the state properties to look nice. That's what they're saying. So I think it's kinda crazy because of that, and that's, you know, we build, 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 but we don't have the resources. And then the governor's solution is, is let's all pray for more water. And I'm sorry. I, I'm, I'm just kinda frustrated as an old resident, and I'm not upset at you, but I just think Highland needs to look good, at least the first month of the summer. So that people can use the facilities, because I go to other cities and the parks are packed. Nobody's using some of our parks because they're dead, or look dead. And you know, so we've got the fling in a month.
So, Josh.
Yeah.
Starting today, not, not looking back at anything in the past. Um, is the issue that we have some systemic things, such as the weather, um, that, that are just universal across the city? Or do you need from us, um, priorities at this point for where we should focus?
It's a little bit of both, okay? Um, we've had a lot of wind in the last little while, makes it tough. Um. How do you wanna go about watering? Do you want us to always stick to the watering schedule and no wavering? Um, I feel as communities have accepted dryness since the drought in twenty-one. Um, lots of cities take heat for extra watering. Um, I know my other counterparts are afraid to water an area extra if it went dry or had a problem. They just let it go and let it slowly come back. Would you prefer us to put extra water on those areas and try to nurse those back, um, even though that they're receiving more water? There's, there's a push for the conservatory of water. And so some people are for, you know, if it's greens up a little bit, um, in the time that it takes longer, then that's fine, or do we pour more water to it? Um, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm looking for. Like, do we go after that areas and just pour more water to those, but?
I guess I'm not an expert on any of this, so maybe I always defer to, well, how are the other cities doing it? Cause they seem to have figured it out, so maybe turn to them and ask, hey, what is your watering schedule? How are you doing it? How are you weathering the dryness and still be able to maintain a, a, a nice-looking city? I don't know.
American Fork, how do you keep Art Di looking nice? There's a lot of grass there. How does Alpine keep the Burgess Park looking nice?
So there's probably a couple of things. We know, you know, Heritage Park, like Scott says, we're gonna be having the fling. Would probably be nice not to have it look dead, where we're gonna be having a big city event.
And you don't really wanna know how much it started getting watered, because it's not our policy. It's almost getting watered six days a week.
And so why is it, why would that be dry?
We, we really struggle with pressure there. Pressure is a problem there. Um, we try to water in the mornings when we're getting the most pressure that we can. We don't get to water it during the day because the use of the pavilion is, um. It was number two. It might be number three with the new park in Highland Glen now, but that pavilion gets a ton of use. So we take a lot of heat if it gets used, if we run the water much longer than, than ten o'clock in the morning. But I mean, we are aware. We've put some fertilizer on it last week. We're putting the water to it. We'll, we're getting it, we're trying to get it back.
Then the community center, I think, have you started watering there again? I know some residents have been concerned about the trees dying there.
Yes. Here's a funny thing about the community center. I bought a sprinkler for it. I've had the sprinkler turned off twice. The superintendent there's had it turned off twice.
And someone coming to turn it off?
Uh huh, someone comes and turns it off. Um, I've put the pressure on them. They understand. I expect, um, a great-looking facility by the time the fling happens. Um, I've given the twenty-fourth of July. I'd like it to look as best as it absolutely can. So they have been trying to help. They've had their landscaper there. Um, there's just a little bit of disconnect from the old building's controller got removed. There's a new controller going in. I told them that that controller needs to go in and at least get the old stuff watering before any of the other stuff goes. Just to, if we can get him there and get him to follow through with their, their leads.
Okay, we have on here, shall we start using green dye again? Did you hear when we use green dye?
Absolutely.
And tell us about that experience.
Can't believe I'm admitting to this, but.
It's confession time, no?
So Chris Wees was our former sprinkler guy, probably one of our hardest-work employees ever. Was great at keeping track of those things, and me and him would ride in the side-by-side with that, and we would spray. Um, I don't know that I remember our formula, but it took us several years to dial in the formula. It's a green dye, mixes with the water. You spray it on those areas. Um, it's super common if someone has a wedding at their house, cause it never goes right before that. And the landscaper goes in and sprays their lawn. It looks like it's green. Um, if you have a colored blindness, it's harder to see. Um, your eyes don't see it as well, but it has a little different tint to it. Um, we used it frequently before.
But counsel, that is a question.
Do it on the Alpine Highway until you get the sprinklers fixed.
I, I think there might be some, like down where we're gonna be having the fling at, it might be nice on our area, so, could it, it might look good. I, I'm just thinking to myself, I, I know we're thinking out of the box, guys, but it's something.
Does it, um, does the dye affect the feel of the grass, or does it come off?
Not at all. It's, it's, it's almost similar to like the blue dye that you mix in with for spraying chemicals. It's a similar, similar to that.
Will it come off on people though, if they're on it?
Nope, once it's on, it's on.
I just wanna make sure we don't have like Highland fling and then everyone walking around green.
Yeah, we've never had a problem.
We're the green city.
I know that some professional sports fields use it as well.
That'd be fun. Imagine election going all green. That would be fun. So guys, are we, I know we're, I'm kinda thinking that might be a solution in certain areas. What areas, if we did the green dye, would you want to see the green dye?
Heritage Park.
Heritage Park and Alpine Highway.
I agree with that.
Do we want anything along, along SR ninety-two, so it looks more green along the, our corridors? I, I would say SR ninety-two, Alpine Highway, uh, our, our Heritage Park.
Okay.
I, now, if our new park is having, is our new park seeming to be doing okay?
We're doing okay. I'm a little worried about the switch when we stop watering some of it during the day. Um, we're having significant pressure losses at night. Um, I've recorded pounds of thirty-nine pounds of pressure at the new park.
So when does the new pump station come online in six thousand West? Where you're bringing water out of the canal?
Uh, we expect it to be by the end of this month. Uh, it was supposed to be prior to that.
How much will that help with our water?
It will help because it has filters on it. That will be the only pump station that has filters on it. Anything else, any other additional water we take has no filters.
Is that pump gonna go directly into our system, or is it take it to one of the residents?
Goes straight into our system.
So will that pressure all of the city, or will there just be certain areas of the city?
I think it's, that part I'm not the best on, but I think it should be just the lower zone.
I, I believe it's the lower zone.
So, which would be from about ten-four hundred south.
That's me and Kim. Okay, um, now, is this right? Implementing a PI system filtration, is that twenty million, am I thinking?
That's twenty million. I, I had talked with Tavis Timothy about this, uh, you know, actually a few weeks back. Uh, because we knew that there were some issues with the filtration, and that was kind of the dollar amount that he threw out. We, we've tried to have some filters in our system. We've, we, there's a lot of problems with it. It's not just, you know, you think, you just buy some filters and you put them in a vault and it's all good and go. But you, you need to add pumps to make sure that the, the pressure difference between the two of them are in the range that it needs to be to, to get the filters to work correctly. And, and that, that was the number that he gave me.
Is that, is that something that we could apply for grants if we had?
We, we could look for some grants, you know, uh, again, talking with, with, uh, some of our other staff. Jeff has suggested, or told me that he had suggested in the past, maybe looking at, because the issue that we have really is with the Murdoch water. Um, he told me the Central Utah Water we get, that's filtered, and that is very clean, very useful, and very expensive. Uh, but his thought was, you know, with all the other users on, on Murdoch Canal, that's all water that comes out of the Provo River from, from Deer Creek. Maybe it should be more of a regional filtration, uh, at the head of the river, uh, and that might be a much, you know, more economy of scale, you know? And, and I, I think it's, sounds like a good solution. I don't know what dollars we're looking at, but it, I think. Grants, uh, for more of a regional facility like that, seems like it'd be a lot more, uh, easier to get too, so.
So is that something that we could get done in time to have an effect this summer?
Probably not.
We'll, we'll get with our lobbyists. We'll get on it. Okay, the next thing is, guys, there's a question. Do we want to water more than three times a week than what we've been telling the residents?
Not generally.
For the Heritage Park, at least for the fling.
I think isolated locations, yes.
The two big parks.
I have an extreme hard time, uh, requiring our residents to do three times a week, cause I have dead spots on my lawn, because it's only three times a week. And I hate it. I don't like it. Uh, but I go out and hand-water it periodically and, you know.
I'd like to know what the other cities do. It was interesting, I was reading, um, I don't know, I think somebody did a Facebook post on this, and, and that question was posed, and they said. Yeah, I expect my parks to be usable, to look nice. It represents my city, and I'd rather have them watered more than what we're watering our personal lawns. So that was an interesting answer.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
You agree as what?
I agree, well, I, that I want our parks looking nice, and if we have to water a little bit extra, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I wanna make it clear that I came here very certain that I would never allow our parks to go more than three times a week unless we allow the residents to go more than three. And Scott, you've made some excellent points tonight, and it is a representation of our city.
City.
And, and it does go beyond that. I mean, it's, we just need to be ready to defend it when we make this decision, to say, there's isolated. Locations where we are going to do it more than three times a week, and we're sorry, residents, you can't do that. But we're going to do it because we have a, a city to represent you, all of us. And we want to do that in a way that it's not embarrassing. And right now, it is a little embarrassing.
Yeah, we want our city to look good.
No, I, I've changed my mind.
My, my thing is, if the green dye kinda helps get it so it doesn't look, and I won't, but I use the word bear, it is. As elected officials, we, we have been getting some comments from residents. I think all of us have had some comments. And so if the green dye can kinda help us get going, if the watering needs to help, I do think there's certain areas that are premier that we need to make sure look at. I'm not saying every park has to have everything, but I think there's some parks that need to look, I think your Heritage, I think your Highland Family Park. They probably need to be looked at as some of those.
And I would be inclined to reverse those two, simply because that's new grass?
Oh, no, I could, that's.
The, the family park?
I think they're all equal. That's why I think those two.
Yeah, cause we're gonna have the fling there and it can't be burned.
Hey.
Okay.
Yeah, but, thank you, Josh, like I, when you kept, I know it's hard. You, you have one of the jobs that it's seen by the public. I've always said, if we had a cracked sewer line, they're not gonna know there's crack. I mean, that's not one of their little area. You have that job that is the visual job. And I know it's hard, and I wanna tell you, you and your staff, thank you. I know you're doing a lot of hard work. I entered, listen, it has been windy. There was a, a windstorm that came up at about four o'clock today. I looked out and I'm going, what is going on? And ten minutes later, it was gone, and I'm going, what just happened? I mean, but I agree, last week, we had some wind that was unbelievable wind. And I agree, there's been, well, and we looked at some of the things. I watched the weather last night. They, I think there was, was there eleven days that were over ninety? And there's, you know, so many other, you know, nineteen, they were in the eighties. I mean, they mentioned it was hotter, but, and so it's, we recognize, but we honestly, what we can do.
Okay, well, we're trying, and we'll get it back, I promise.
I know this green dye sounds, but if it works, I think it's an option.
Okay.
Is there anything else that you need from us?
Well, a lot more, more full-time employees.
We've added, what, in the last couple of years, we've added about two or three?
I know, and I, I appreciate that. Don't make me seem like I'm ungrateful about it, but we are working super hard. I mean, you figure that the guys are mowing forty-four acres a day, essentially at least thirty-three football fields a day. The sprinkler guys need to cover that many days, that many acres if, if they're, if we're gonna be proactive. Right now, we're just reactive. Um, they have, they need to get through, you know, forty-four acres of sprinklers a day. Alls it takes is one major problem. They're days out the door, you know? So one major leak and they're digging it, and everything else that was on the list to get to didn't get to because we had a leak, you know? So, and I will always fight for more full-time employees. It'd be great. Um, it would help. It's just hard, um, when we're training in new guys every year. And so there's a learning curve in trying to get some of them on, and some years we got great employees, and some years there's some that aren't so great.
So remind us, how many full-time you have?
Um, four, right? Five, five counting me?
Five? I think you're.
I gotta think for a sec, sorry.
All right. We appreciate, thank you. We appreciate, thank you. Okay, four?
Okay, and I'm, I'm open for questions. Like, you can call me. I'll talk to you about it. You have a certain area, a certain problem. I'm here.
Trim the trees down the median strip of the Alpine Highway.
And trust me, that's been on my list. Um, we've had a few trees that did not make it through winter.
So the, the median strip's going to Alpine in the rest that are in Highland. New trees that are planted in there, they look very nice.
And, I mean, the islands are a death trap, just so you know. Okay, it's just a death sentence for the tree. It has very little bit of dirt, has the worst conditions. I don't know if you've seen U dot salt the road, um, but it's not the best conditions for them. So I know everybody loves the islands and it's a calming and it slows people down, but they are super hard to keep things alive. And so the trees are, are short, short sentence. If we get ten years out of it in the island, I'll be super happy.
And then I, I know that we've had in the, in the past, there's always been a lot of conversations about trying to replace trees down some of the, you know, the, in the, in the Parkway corridor. We, you know, we, we talked about, we still have some over here at Arbor. Is that something that it needs to come?
That's on our list. We have a list of trees to get planted and in reality, we're, we're struggling just to catch up. We've been trying to take care of the dandelions and we're super long on that.
Sound like where his wife, here's your list.
Yeah, so it's on our list. We're aware. We've got spots for them. We want to get them planted. And then it, be honest, it's just super warm right now and I kind of would just soon wait a little bit. We have some days of service lined up for the nine eleven. I think there's going to be a lot of planning on some of that stuff. Um, so we've got a couple of the stakes lined up there and I would like to apply some of that.
And we appreciate those stakes coming, really give us a good, you know, suck them up. How, while we have you, when we talk about some park maintenance, how is everything over at the Highland Family Park?
Um, it's getting used a lot.
Are the cells up or all the cells up?
The cells will be up tomorrow. Um, they've been on our to-do and I kind of dropped the ball on that and I didn't realize until the other day. I'm like, oh, we didn't put those up. So I dropped the ball, take full blame for that. But the sales will be up. They take a little bit of work to get up.
Is the park coming together? When do we think when people can get on the park and on the trails?
Like I, I told you, I wanted to have that ready by the fling. Um, I think the new grass is looking phenomenal. We've put in a little extra work on that. And some seed and some things in there. Um, I think we'll be able to take that fence down soon. Like I said, I'm a little bit worried about the watering and we'll figure that out, but, uh, soon by the fling, we'll have that fence down. The trail will be open and we'll probably not put up signs that say no organized sports for the time being, but some neighborhood games are going to be a problem.
We're excited to see that happen.
You maintain, uh, North County Boulevard, the two side, the grass and the,
Mm-hmm.
And then you spray the rocks with something that kills the plants.
What, pre-emergent?
What do you spray in with? Because I'll tell you what, it kills it like within two days.
Okay, so
Effective.
We use a pre-emergent, okay? Pre-emergents are dyed yellow. So anytime you see the yellow, it's a pre-emergent. The yellow freaks people out, but there's nothing we can do because that's how it comes from the factory. It has to be dyed yellow.
Yeah.
So the pre-emergent binds seeds. It keeps the seeds from germinating. Depending on how heavy we mix it, we can get up to about five to six months on binding the seeds. Um, alls it does is really wrap around the seeds, stops it from those germinating. Water is the carrier, so we just use water to get it out there. We do use a glycol fate. Um, this year we tried to spray the glycol fate first and not have the two mixed together. And we tried to do that a little separate, um, to get a little more spot spray and see if we could narrow that down.
It, it is very effective.
Anything else, counsel, you want to, thank you, Josh, for being here tonight. I know it's late, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for your patience. Please let me know any of your concerns.
Remember to talk to Brittany about viewpoint. Okay, let's move on to our next item. Uh, we have the annual survey, which is item number seven D. Is there something fast there?
Uh, we just wanted to put that on your radar. We're going to start preparing questions. We'll send out a draft, well, not even a draft, but just, hey, here's what it looks like, like we did last year. Start thinking of questions you'd like to see. We would like to work closely with the council this year to make sure that we are asking questions that you care about in a way that you feel will elicit the best responses. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay, we'll move on. The next one is community development. Anything there that we need to be aware on update?
A few things, just real quick. For your information, planning commission, we've got the PO zone amendments and the PO zone daycare agreement coming up, uh, their next meeting. I sent out letters to all residents, all property owners. The text amendments are on our website, so people can look at those, review those and comment. So I'm trying to give a lot of notice to people. We're potentially also having a site plan for the vet clinic down at the Wild Rose commercial coming to planning commission. So you'll probably see that in August. And then fence question. On where we have the maintenance agreements, over at the Foxwood Estates. So that corridor, that's not a trail, but is a trail corridor. Per our code, fences along a trail corridor or open space have to be two feet open on top. There's no trail facility there and there's not likely to be one in the next who knows how many years. That fence is technically illegal. There's some leeway in our fence code that I can approve fences as long as they meet kind of the intent of this. I don't want to just do that willy-nilly. Um, my thought is depending on how the council feels, I could issue a fence permit for, because they didn't get a fence permit for that fence. Issue a fence permit, put a condition on it saying, this is being allowed because there is no trail facility there. And they can keep their privacy fence up. In the event that a trail facility is installed, any new fence or reconstructed fence will have to meet the openness standards going forward. And I have no idea when in the future that would be. But, and then apply that similar standard anywhere else. We have a similar, where we've preserved a trail corridor, but there's no facility and say, in that case, we can have it private until we build a, a trail.
So we're saying that we're going to allow them to keep that fence?
I am asking for direction.
That's, he's asking for the direction.
Yes, no. If we require the other side of that trail to have an open fence, we need both sides of the trail to have both.
I, well, so south, along where the actual trail is, we allowed them to have privacy fences. We changed our fence code.
We did for three hundred feet.
Yes, that's all of those properties. So all of.
Thirty feet.
Yeah. So everyone that is.
The question is, there's no trail here. What he's asking is can they have the privacy fence? And if a trail comes in and they do anything with the fence, then it falls under the code where it has to have the open fence, fence on it. Or do we want to have them saying, no, this is in our trail corridor plan and so you need to have the open fence there? They have not gotten a fence permit when they put the fence in. So, so it's not something. Counsel, what's your suggestion here?
I think it needs to be open.
Can I?
I think we can talk about this.
I'll be honest, it's too late. It's too late.
We're not going to solve this and I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Look at it.
We'll talk next time.
Go talk next time. Okay, let's just look through the, before we go to a closed session, we need to go through our calendaring. So next Tuesday, we have a general plan meeting and that is at six PM, right?
Yes.
So next Tuesday, six PM. Next Wednesday morning, uh, the ninth, will be lone peak public safety and we have uh, just one or two brief items. And then we have a work session to discuss. We have, uh, uh, why are we calling it a consultant coming in to help with answering some questions about uh, how you would fund or the, the, the fund, like the allocation for a district. Okay, you have it all up there. So if you're just look there, just be a, uh, aware of that. The one at the very end, you're probably not aware of is the July twenty-ninth is a city council library board work session. So every Tuesday in July has a, a meeting.
Sure does.
Except, yeah, so, just so you're aware. Then we do have fling that first, uh, Thursday, Friday and Saturday there in August. So you, you can kind of keep that on. We're only doing them on Thursday, Friday and Saturday. There's nothing on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday. Car show will be Thursday. Uh, but they have, and then Friday they will start with Battle of the Bands like at ten o'clock in the morning. And then of course on Saturday, we have our, our big thing. Just so you're aware, at the fling, we are anticipating the fireworks. I don't know if you'd heard, we are not able to do fireworks at, they're at the junior high anymore. We are looking if our firework vendor approves to actually use the baseball diamond there at Heritage Park to shoot our fireworks. Like it, so you're aware.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question about the meet the candidate at open house?
Oh, when, what night's that? Oh, there it is.
It's the seventeenth, two weeks from Thursday.
Did you end up inviting the school district, school more candidates?
We have not, has anyone reached out to school district on that?
Yes, we will be doing that. I just was able to get the final email from one of the last candidates just today. So that email will go out tomorrow. Josh is going to say, don't use the baseball field.
We have the diamonds, the home plate diamond is astroturf. Would be my not.
We're talking about Heritage Park, not Highland.
Highland Park.
Okay.
We're not using the new park.
No. I told them no.
Because I was like, we're, we're not putting up, say, uh, the shade sales then because they'll melt too, so.
I know. We, we talked about actually trying to do it and they'll go, no, the shade sells and we were worried about the baseball.
Okay.
Thank you for, it's Heritage Park we're looking at. Okay, I, hold it. Guys, I need, guys, we need a motion. We need a motion to go to closed session. Do you have it up there? Because it's for imminent litigation and for a discuss.
I move that the city council recess, the regular city council meeting to convene in a closed meeting in the executive concert, conference room to discuss the character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual pending or reasonably imminent litigation and the purchase, exchange or lease of real property as provided by Utah code.
Motion by, motion by Brittany, second by Scott. We will now do a voice vote, vote Brittany. Scott.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
We are now in closed session. We have six.